Pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next is a food of consent agenda. Is there anything anyone needs to move on?
I move the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is consider, well, number eight has been removed from the agenda. So we'll go straight to number nine, which is consideration of the 2024 annual tax settlement. Welcome, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Each year, you charge me with the authority to collect that year's taxes as they go on the books. And as a result of that charge, at the end of the fiscal year, it is my responsibility to then report out to you what those efforts have been and the result of our collection efforts. This is that report. So I'm gonna start off with all good news. For our new Hanover County General Fund, our tax levy for this year is $225,329,472.74. Of those monies, our uncollected balance as of June 30th is $753,440.18. That's a collection rate of 99.67 percent. For our debt service, we levied $11,4437.78. Our uncollected balance is $38,078.45 for a collection rate of 99.66 percent. This is our five-year comparison, the historical glance at what our collection rates have been through time. Moving on to our fire district, unincorporated county, our general fund levy is $14,711,000, $1,947.31. Our uncollected balance is $51,241.90. That leaves us with a collection rate of 99.65 percent. Here is the five-year comparison for that, for the fire district and the unincorporated county. For our prior year collections, these are all tax dollars that we collected in this, in the past fiscal year for all tax years from 2014 all the way through 2023. The total amount collected was $1,060,766.46. I'm happy to report that the funds that we have collected are all above what was budgeted. And I'm incredibly proud of the team that I have. They do outstanding work. Some of them have been able to join me today. The others are watching from the office. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I wish the rest of the night would go like that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we need you to approve the tax settlement.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2024 annual tax settlement.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Number 10 is consideration of approval of the Scottsdale Water Main Extension Project. Mr. Theo McLavish.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to inform on the status of the Scottsdale Water Main Extension Project. My brief presentation is an overview of the project purpose, funding, key milestones, and to request your consideration of several items. Two public hearings were held in July and September of last year. On September 3rd, the board approved the project budget and authorized staff to submit a community development block grant infrastructure application to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Earlier this year, on February 19th, the State Water Infrastructure Advisory Committee approved our grant application. On April 29th, the county received a letter of intent to fund the project along with the funding contract. This project shall provide public water service to residents in the Old Scottsdale-Corkland area. This initiative will enhance the health and safety of approximately 120 residents across 57 parcels. It will involve the installation of 3,200 linear feet of two-inch water lines, 3,800 linear feet of eight-inch water lines, and the addition of seven fire hydrants. This significant community development project is made possible through partnerships with the Scottsdale residents, funding from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and collaboration with Cape Fear Public Utility Authority for environmental, design, engineering, and construction support. Ordua Group North Carolina has been recommended to provide compliance and administrative services for the project. As this map indicates, the project area is along Highway 17, and you see to the west of Highway 17, Stevens Church Road and McIntyre Trail. On the east side of Highway 17, the Forest Trail and Creekwood Road area. The total estimated cost of the project is $4,748,792. 63 percent of the funding will come from the CDBGI program. The 1.75 million in local funding associated with this project was included in the previously adopted 2526 county budget. Thus, no new funds are included with this agenda item. The capital project ordinance being requested establishes the project-specific budget and record-keeping for the project. This funding strategy aims to provide long-term public health and safety benefits to residents while decreasing reliance on local funds. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality anticipates that the project will be completed within 36 to 40 months. Important deadlines include the requirement that the funding contract with DEQ be fully executed by this July 30th. The construction contract needs to be established by July 2027, and construction completed by July 2028. Final reports and reimbursement requests must be submitted by September 2028 with the grant closing out in November of 28. Today, the board has been asked to consider four actions. First, approve the contract with NCDEQ to accept funds for the project. Approve the inter-local agreement with Cape Fear Public Utility Authority to provide environmental, engineering, design, and construction services for the project. Approve a contract with the administrative consultant, Ordua Group North Carolina, to assist with grant compliance and preparation of required documentation. And lastly, approve the capital project ordinance budget amendment 26-002 that budgets the revenue and expenditures associated with the project. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we appreciate your time and your consideration of these items. If you have questions, I am available along with several other staff. Rebecca Ross, our Planning and Land Use Director, Eric Cradle, our Chief Financial Officer, Amanda Kostosia, Budget Officer, and staff from Cape Fear Public Utility Authority. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for this presentation, and thank you to New Hanover County staff as well as the folks over at CFPUA for working so hard to secure this grant from the state. This is a really wonderful opportunity. I'm glad that we're going to be investing in this infrastructure alongside with our partners at the state. I know that these timeframes sometimes seem so darn long, and there's probably not anything that can be done about that, Theo, but is there any way to move that timeline along any faster? And if there isn't, I understand, but we've really got to try to put this to work as quickly and effectively as we can.
We've established a great relationship with Cape Fear Public Utility Authority. Everyone's leaning in same direction. We understand the timelines, and we are being proactive now and in the future to meet those timelines. We are somewhat limited. We have to go in a step-by-step manner to make sure that we are adhering to some very complex requirements for funding. But where we can move expeditiously, we certainly hope to do that in partnership with Cape Fear Public Utility.
Thank you. I know that you will. And again, I just want to say thank you for your hard work in helping to secure this grant. It's a great win for the people of New Hanover County.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry. I just want to say I am happy to know that the county is a part of this because I know the residents out there at Scottsdale, a lot of people that probably aren't local don't realize Scottsdale is still part of New Hanover County. And it's kind of out there at the top of the county, but the fact that we can connect them away from wells and they get more fire protection with the hydrants, I'm very proud that we could be a part of that. And I hope we continue to do things like this, you know, for residents who need it, especially those, those folks up there. So I just want to appreciate your hard work, too.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too am concerned about the timeframes that we have here. We're looking at three and a half years for this to be completed. Do we have any suggestions on intermediate steps so that people who live in that area can have some clean water to drink? Three and a half years is a very long time.
We have been working and communicating with the residents throughout the process so there's been transparency and clarity of the timeline and the expectations that the 36 to 40 months. We have, we are still working with the Cape Fear Public Utility staff. Again, we're all leaning in, understanding it's a long time, working under the limitations of having to adhere to some complex requirements from the state. And if we don't adhere to some compliance requirements, then there's a likelihood or possibility that the funding could be interrupted. So as we lean in, we also want to make sure that we are balancing all of those variables to move as quickly as we can.
And I know that this is imperfect and doesn't address all of the community's needs, but we did partner with the community in Scottsdale several months ago, and there is a water station at the community center within the community to help bridge the gap. Again, not, not a perfect solution, but in addition to moving quickly as we can through the process to make sure that we meet all of the funding requirements, we've done that as well.
Great, Rebecca. And I remember when we did that. Has there been any discussion about a bottled water program in that area? Again, I just, I can't imagine of three and a half years of waiting. Any discussion about a bottled water program?
That has not been part of the discussion at that, at this point in time. If that's something that the board would like for staff to pursue further, then we would always be glad to take that direction.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, unless there's other comments, I'd like to approve in one motion the four items that were brought before us: approving the contract, approving the interlocal agreement, approving the contract with Ordua Group, and adopting the capital project ordinance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The number 11 is consideration to conclude county participation in the interlocal agreement with the City of Wilmington for Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, or WAC. Anyone have anything they'd like to? Are we getting a presentation with this?
And I do have a slide for this particular item in the one that follows. I'll largely follow along with the comments that I made at Agenda Review. Number one, I never bring to you without serious deliberation advice, counsel, policy recommendations. And so this was equally reviewed, scrutinized, and I'm bringing to you a recommendation that I think is clearly in keeping with the board's adopted policy as it relates to withdrawing funding from the workforce housing program that was $3 million a year. To date, there have been $9 million put into the field of play. That work will continue. But I do believe this is in keeping with the overall policy orientation of the board to withdraw from the direct funding space and deal more with market considerations and policy interventions that in my mind are largely driven by your planning board that you appoint for those reasons as well as our planning staff. I also think if you look at the body of work from the Workforce Housing Committee, while it has made recommendations around accessory dwelling units and things such as that, the majority of its work has been in the space of funding and largely what is the public sector's commitment as the source of leverage to deal with taking the cost of housing down and/or creating new housing stock. The county staff has also been the permanent staff to the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, and with the policy direction, we have contracted the planning office by two positions, one that was exclusively dedicated to the housing function. And so in light of, for what I know to be the purposes that the committee was established, much of the work that it has done over the course of time, and the fact that the board has withdrawn its financial commitment, not its policy goals of addressing the cost of housing, but its financial commitment, I believe the county withdrawing from the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee is the most appropriate course of action. And so that is my recommendation to you. It does not preclude the city from continuing that work and perhaps bringing the capital to the table that has been in play from the county in recent years. And it does not at all suggest that your planners or the planning board or others that are work on policy are not still interested and committed to your overall focus of ensuring a variety of housing types at a cross-section of price points is available within the community. And so, Mr. Chairman, that, that represents my comments. I'm glad to take any questions that come forward.
Mr. Chair. One of the things that I think is important to point out, as manager already referenced, is that for the last three years, the county has indeed invested $9 million into a variety of projects. And additionally, the New Hanover Community Endowment that New Hanover County created has invested close to $20 million into the notion of workforce and affordable housing, which I think everyone up here agrees is important. There are, of course, policy differences about how to achieve a variety of options that are out there. I, for instance, tend to believe that the private sector is most in best position to advance the issue of affordability. County, no doubt, has played a role. And I would just ask for the members of this board as well as the community to consider that whenever, over the course of the last six years since this organization was established, this joint advisory committee, that we have made significant investments into the, again, issues and areas of workforce and affordable housing. I also want to point out, though, that our community members have repeatedly, over the last couple of years, indicated to us that they are concerned about the rate and speed of density in New Hanover County. And I think that it would be remiss of us to ignore those considerations, to tell the individuals who have indicated to us that they're concerned about the density that is available left to be built in New Hanover County, for us to just continue on with a policy that, in addition to the work that's already being done by the private sector, will only add that much more apartment buildings and such into our community. And it's not to say that I'm unconcerned about the issue of affordability. Of course I am. It'd be ridiculous to say otherwise. But I'm also concerned about the quality of life for the people that are in this community. And we cannot simply build our way out of this issue. And so for the individuals who will say otherwise, I would ask them to explain to all of us how they attempt to reconcile those concepts, how they can simultaneously say that they're concerned about the rate and speed of growth, how they're simultaneously concerned with the quality of life for the people in this, in this community, and then insist that the county play some role in subsidizing the building of apartments in this community. To me, that doesn't make sense. Doesn't make sense at all. And so this policy shift that we have decided to endeavor toward is a recognition of what our community members have told us. They have told us, please be more circumspect about the building that you're doing in this community. And if we were to just continue on with subsidizing these same things over and over again, just in the name of affordable housing, just using that phrase, and that's the only thing that we have to point to, that's the only thing that matters, so long as we say affordable housing, then it's okay. Well, I don't agree with that. I think that we have made a determination that is looking out for the best interest of the people of this community. And yes, we will continue to dialogue with the city. We will continue to dialogue with any number of partners on how we can make sure that we do have the housing that is necessary for this community. But I've said it before, and I'll say it again now, New Hanover County cannot fit the entirety of the world inside of it. And so, with that in mind, I think that we have got to move forward with the county manager's recommendation with confidence, and again, recognize that as there are projects or ideas that are worthy of pursuit or exploration, we will explore them. But to have an unfunded mandate in the form of this joint committee, one where perhaps the alignment of the city and the county are not the same, to utilize our staff time and tell them, come up with projects that we're ultimately not going to pay for or approve, would be a mistake. So I certainly will be voting in favor of the manager's recommendation to end our relationship with the joint subcommittee. But these individuals who are participating in this joint subcommittee can certainly reach out to us at any time. It's not like there's a limitation on your ability to speak to me or speak to the other commissioners or speak to the staff that's here. We're just going to reorient the way that we look at this issue. Another point that I want to make in connection with that is those $29 million that we've played a direct or indirect role in deploying over the last several years. Many of those projects haven't even been advanced in some meaningful way. There are no people living in the units that have been contemplated before. So don't we owe it to the public? Don't we owe it to the people that we represent to at least pause for a moment and determine how successful or not successful the investments that we've previously made are going to be before we just continue on unabated with further investment into this area? I think that we absolutely deserve, or the public deserves, for us to do that. I, I know that these topics can sometimes be charged. People like to say things like, you don't care about affordable housing because you didn't provide this funding. That is not true. It's obviously the case that we want housing affordability to be available for the people who live in this community. But there are limitations. We cannot, again, accommodate the entire world in New Hanover County, and I for one will not attempt to try. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Very glad to hear some of the comments from Commissioner Scalise, but I, I think that he has got a misperception of, of what has actually happened with the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, as well as our commitment that we made three years ago for the $3 million per year, total commitment of $15 million. In the three years since, we have spent $9 million, and it has done exactly what you just said you were not aware of, I guess. It has leveraged $150 million of private investment that has gone in to try and solve this problem, along with multiple suggestions that have come out of these meetings. These regular meetings by citizens who are all volunteer, we have minimal cost to the county. This is a huge problem in New Hanover County. And yes, we cannot fit everybody in. We certainly can be creative, look around the country, which is what we're doing, grabbing those initiatives that will help us and help those people, especially in the workforce housing conditions, those people who are, make our critical employees, many of which actually work for New Hanover County, who can't afford to live in New Hanover County. That's a large part of what every one of the committee meetings where they discuss. And we have a group of people who've been invested now for six years trying to work through this problem, hundreds of hours on each one's part to try and do something responsible, you know, for our community, and to use and have direct conversations with our planning staff. This is a wonderful committee, and they should be allowed to do, continue their work. We've also made a request to the endowment about restoring that $3 million, at least for the, the next two years. I don't think we've done it officially, but certainly I have reached out because I believe that money is critical so we can continue the good work that we're doing. So I, I, I think it is premature to do away with this committee, especially sending the wrong message to our entire community that we don't care what happens. We'll leave it to the city. Well, the city citizens are county citizens, and that's an important part of our work. We can't just leave it up to them. Every survey we take, affordable and workforce housing is right at the top of the list, and for us to run in the opposite direction and say, well, we'll listen to you when you have something good to say, that's not the way good government works. Good government is a partnership with the people out there, and the people have, thank you, the people have described what they see as a serious problem. And we have taken the steps by bringing in, and other people of the community through this Workforce Housing Committee to help advise us and let them know that we hear their voices, to give them the platform so that they can help us study and help us try and find solutions. By abandoning this and them in this work, we send the exact opposite message to our community. I, I think this is way premature to go ahead and to try and cut this off, especially when we know that we have the endowment who is at least considering what they should have done, one of their own initiatives that was set in their founding documents, affordable and workforce housing. I know they've got their own set of issues going on over there, but I go back to $9 million spent, $150 million of private investment. There is no greater return on investment by any committee of this county than we've ever had here. This is a huge success. Why should we walk away from that? Thank you.
Anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm a little confused, not confused with the discussion on the financial policy. You know, a decision was made to slash the budget pretty deep and included getting rid of this commitment that we had made. But I'm confused that we, we also, on the other hand, have policy that supports, you know, looking at affordable housing. More confusion is that we want community engagement. We actively seek it all the time. Yet we're getting rid of the committee where the actual folks that are immersed in this issue every day are, are there. I've been to two community meetings this year with housing. The rooms are packed full of folks in the industry that want to solve this problem. And I think with- And I think withdrawing from this conversation won't help with this issue, I think leaning on it because it's a financial decision, I don't personally think that's a good enough reason to get rid of a committee that's been together for a long time, working on this very, very important issue that won't go away. And, you know, I gave a recommendation last week that if, you know, the old agreement is not good anymore, or doesn't look like it's viable anymore, let's look at a different way to form this committee, or come up with a different plan. But just to do away with it because a budget decision was made, I don't think is the right thing to do, because I don't see us solving this problem without more input. So, I would personally not, I'm not in favor of getting rid of a committee, throwing all that work away just because of one budget decision, and I hope that other folks feel that way. So, those are my comments. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. A lot of great comments here tonight, and I know it's a topic that we're all very passionate about, but let me just first say to the volunteers who've worked on this committee, thank you, you've done a lot of work, you've done exactly what we asked you to do. And the purpose of our committees is to advise our county commissioners, and to work at the pleasure of the county commissioner. And we have a recommendation from our manager that he is ready to move past that. A lot of the, a lot of it, the role of that committee was to decide where that $3 million in funding would go, and make that recommendation, and if that is no longer in the budget, that is no longer the role of that committee. So, that said, you know, I want to address something I've heard here tonight about how we cut the budget so much, we really did not achieve revenue neutral, we did not cut and slash the budget, we actually increased it by $11 million. It was a proposal from staff that we had 35 cents, and 39 more million dollars would be added to the budget, we just did not allow that, because our citizens overwhelmingly told us that they did not want to see their tax rates go up. They overwhelmingly said they were struggling at home, and they wanted us to hear them. So, I don't want the folks out there to think that we're not interested in affordable housing, we certainly are, but I'm not sure we can build our way out of it anymore. We need to incentivize the public sector and our folks that are building in New Hanover County to incorporate a piece of affordable housing into their projects. I don't think it's the role of the government to do that, we're struggling with that, and I think that it's time to see where our $9 million, what are the metrics of what we've already put out there? And the endowment has stepped up to the plate with a commitment of $19 million, so I want to see that money get on the ground, and let's see what the metrics are of those, and are we hitting the right sectors in our community that we're trying to hit? So, at this time, I'm inclined to go with the manager's recommendation.
I don't think that we're throwing the committee away, I mean, the city is still going to be working with them, so it's not like we're disbanding it. So, I hear a motion.
Mr. Chair, a second. The city is working with who?
Is the city not involved in this at all?
Yeah, they have their own committee, they are committed to try and solve this, but you just mentioned in your comments that the city will still work with them. Who is them? If we disband that committee, there's no longer a platform.
The city can take over.
The city, I see, because it's a city problem?
So, I think what I heard the manager say was that we had a very capable planning staff who would work with our developers, and jump in here if you want to, and like you and I talked about at our agenda review, we still have the ability, when something comes before us, to put conditions on it, and whether there be a workforce housing piece in that, you know, we certainly have control over those items that come before the county commissioners to put conditions on it, and to have our planning staff encourage that. That's kind of where I'm at with it.
That's right.
It's not like we're throwing the baby out with the bath.
Madam Vice Chair, another point that could be added on to that is that part of what happens whenever you set aside a certain number of dollars, $3 million a year, is that you feel obligated to approve something, regardless of whether or not it is a great project. So, I'm not disputing that there have been well-intentioned projects that we have considered over the prior three years of the $3 million each year, but there also is something of a demand, there's a requirement, there's a force that's pushing for projects to be approved that may not be in the best interest of the community, as I already indicated. It may be, it may not be, I don't know. We have a lot of dollars that we have already allocated, and we have no idea what kind of impact that's going to make on our community. I think that it is prudent for us to take the pause that we are taking, reevaluate what our priorities are, and then we can make further determinations, we're fully capable, not only do we have a planning staff, we have a great staff that I think most anybody would tell you is easy to do business with. They know how to coordinate with people, I don't think that New Hanover County is, for instance, is one of those places that people complain about, that's a bureaucratic nightmare. I don't think New Hanover County falls into that box. We know how to work nimbly, we know how to help people get to where they want to go on any number of issues, including on building and developing. But this change reflects the reality that we now find ourselves in, it is the prudent approach, and it is for that reason that I move that we conclude the county's participation in the interlocal agreement with the city of Wilmington.
I still have a comment to make, Commissioner Scalise.
Mr. Chair, wait a minute.
Before you, go ahead, ma'am.
Well, respectfully, ma'am, perhaps you don't know how this works.
Don't call me ma'am, please, that's a very rude thing to say to me. You got to speak before your motion.
Wait a second, whenever you make, let me make my motion.
So, wait, you get to speak before your motion, and then I can't speak, so when you want to do it this way?
Well, you interrupted me, and I can make a motion, and then a second can be called, and then there can be further discussion.
So, I can talk when you're ready for me to talk. Okay, go ahead, make the motion. Make the motion, then.
Mr. Chair.
I mean, they were free speaking before, and now all of a sudden, we can't.
Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Scalise, make your motion, and then we'll let Commissioner Walker speak. Okay?
Well, I think that I made my motion, I just didn't finish the last five words, for the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee.
Well, I guess it fails for the lack of a second. Oh, okay, couldn't hear.
I wanted to hear Commissioner Walker's comments.
Well, I was just following up with what we were doing just then, but I guess, you know, the rules, that's fine, whatever. I just don't understand, there's a reason we formed this committee to begin with, it was not specifically tied to the five-year plan. Just because the budget decision was made, doesn't mean this problem does not still exist, and does not mean that we should not have community members giving us feedback, community members, like I mentioned, that are immersed in this issue every day. And so, I just don't understand why one financial budget decision means this whole, this whole contract is gone, it just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, obviously, it's going to happen anyway, and that, you know, I'll actually deal with that vote, but I just think it further withdraws us from this whole conversation, and the fact that, you know, the members put all this hard work into it, and I just think it's disrespectful to our community. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, continuing the discussion, I'd like to respond to one of the comments that Commissioner Scalise made, we do know what the impact of this project is. It's over 400 new units on the ground as a result of the $9 million plus the $150 million that has been leveraged, so there's very specific metrics that we have met. Again, it is incredibly successful. Now, a lot of that was done by our staff members, which have now been fired because of the cuts that were made in the budget, because that's where the work was. The work of the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee was not to make the selections of who would, you know, win those, each one of those RFPs, it was to advise and bring forward ideas. One of the major shifts in thinking that has happened over the past three years, or four years that they've been in existing, in existence, was shifting the focus on to the repair and renovation of existing housing, because we now recognize that is the most affordable housing out there, instead of just constantly focusing on the good work of builders to build new housing or new units, but to grab those that have already been built, repaired, and renovated, that's where your bang for the buck is. But I credit the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee to help shifting the focus on that of our own staff, that's just one of the many things. As well as now, the Workforce Housing Committee is encouraging our staff to start to engage with Brunswick and Pender Counties, so we have a more regional approach. This is work that was not moving forward before they were doing it, they have a very specific purpose that they have been doing here in this conversation. So, I would ask you to please consider the work that these volunteers are doing, so that we can come up with solutions, so that our good deputy sheriffs will have a place that they can call a home, because right now, they don't have the salaries that will afford that. That's just one example, our teachers, our nurses, et cetera. Done?
I don't think it's fair to drag these officers in the back of the room into this conversation, I see them looking at us like that, but thank you for listening to them. I think you'll hear a lot of folks in our community say that they don't want their tax dollars funding gaps for the developers. That's what a lot of, a lot of our focus has been going to, is giving developers more money so they make more profit, and I hear my constituents saying they don't want that anymore. So, and I'm, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, so, anyway, and what we did partially in our budget was fund more money for our police officers, we did increase salaries, I mean, that was a priority to us. Instead of doing that, let's just pay our teachers and our police officers and our firemen more money so they can afford to live in the county that they represent. And then we know we're hitting the target audience that we're trying to get in our workforce housing endeavors, and just because we say workforce housing, are we really getting to the sector that we're trying to reach? It's become such a buzzword in the community that it's not always hitting that sector.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Chair Pierce, when you say paying for the gaps, when you have a project that comes forward, as we do, let's just say it's a $50 million project, and they can go to the federal government for low-income housing tax credits, or a portion of it.
And that's government-funded housing, that's a little different, that's HUD.
Yeah, I know, but in this project, this theoretical project, they bring that money into our community to help try and solve this problem, they put it together with their own private investment money, also that's there, and sometimes they are, they come short by $50,000 or $100,000, that's where that gap is.
Or a couple of million, which is what we put out in some cases.
Oh, in some cases, it could be, I was just, in my theoretical choice, you know, project that I was putting out there, but that's money that would not come into our community absent all the work that's being done by the private sector, that's the prime of the pump. So, we end up getting a, again, in my theoretical, you know, project, a $50 million project that comes to New Hanover County that, absent our tiny little gap filling there, wouldn't come at all. That's a pretty good return on investment, and that's happening all over New Hanover County.
Mr. Chair, I have one more comment. Thank you. I'm reading the agreement, the bylaws, the purpose of the committee shall be organized for the purpose of developing a comprehensive workforce housing study, workforce housing opinion study and public awareness campaign, support for increasing equitable access and the supply of workforce housing that is affordable, informing, informing the appointing authorities and other organizations of their findings and making recommendations in an advisory capacity the appointing authorities and other organizations as necessary. I don't see money tied to this, I see a purpose, and I just think we're, we can sit here and debate affordable workforce, all that kind of stuff, and obviously, the budget, which has been the catalyst for this removal, but the purpose is the purpose, and that's not changed, that's still here, that's still important, and I still believe the county should have, should have some stake in it, and some conversation in it, and get reported to about it. And I know we have great staff, and that has nothing to do with that, that's, this is solely about this committee, and whether we just get rid of it because a budget decision was made, so that's my final comment.
Well, I just have one more, I know we got a motion on tape on a second, and now, now my mind is moving a lot faster. I asked a year ago, do we have metrics on the, on the developments that we have invested in, which I don't know if they're built or not, because I don't think they are, how many teachers live there, how many police officers live there, how many firemen live there? Because we continue to use those three professions, and no other professions, but I would be curious to know what those metrics are for that affordable housing.
And Madam Vice Chair, I can't answer your question, I couldn't then, and am really in no better shape today. Many of the projects are still in the course of construction, I do know of two, or at least one, that opened in the Castle Hayne area that was actually an older adult facility, so it certainly does not qualify in that context. What I can say, and the county has sunsetted that program as well, is that the county, to my knowledge, is the only one that was providing direct assistance to teachers through a housing stipend that was worked with the Board of Education. To my knowledge, that is the only program in this community that did that, and that was independent and not at all inclusive of the $3 million housing program that the planning staff was administering on an annual basis.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Would you call the vote?
You've made the motion.
Yes, sir.
Now, second.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Next is consideration to conclude county participation in jointly adopted bylaws with the city of Wilmington for the Community Relations Advisory Committee.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the board, and as with the prior issue, I never bring a recommendation to the board that is not first and foremost in keeping with the policy orientation of the board, as expressed to the staff and to our community. While changes within the Office of Civic Engagement were not directed by this board, they were inclusive of the budget that the board approved. In the time that the county and the city created the Community Relations Advisory Committee, there have been at least three other committees created that are, in my opinion, doing the work that is much described in the bylaws of the Community Relation Advisory Committee. We have the Hispanic-Latino Commission, we have the Commission on Women, and we have the African-American Commission on Culture Heritage in History in our community, and if you look at the recitals in the bylaws, they are very consistent and similar to the work of those committees. In addition, that committee has, more than others, struggled with its core mission, and I tried to articulate that to you in written communication today, where that commission did attempt to advance policies that were not in keeping with stated priorities of the board, perhaps in stated priorities of the city council, but not necessarily reflective of the county commission. We do have a high-functioning, high-quality staff in civic engagement, their mission too, has changed based on success in our community, and similar to the Workforce Housing Committee, while not permanent staff, we are rotating staff to the Community Relations Advisory Committee, and I believe, going forward, the best course of action for use of staff and the goals of our county is to withdraw from the Community Relations Advisory Committee, that work may continue with the city and allow our staff to do the refinement of the work that have, of the committees that have been created since 2019. And I imagine there are other committees that that team will identify and bring to you to create, or there may be things that this board identifies that you direct the staff to develop. But again, this is not an easy recommendation for me to make, it has been part of the policy framework since 2016, but in light of work that's been done, and work that we have charged our office to do, priorities of this board, I do believe withdrawing is the most consistent course of action. And with that, I'm prepared to take questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to go backwards for just a second, back to our previous item, just for clarification's sake, in the bylaws there, there's a termination clause that requires 90 days' notice. I'm assuming that any action on the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee is 90 days off, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we intend to fully, based on the board's vote, operate consistent with the interlocal agreement that was established. In all fairness, the fact that it is county staff that staffs it, our goal for that 90 days would be an effective ramp down and transition to the city if it is in fact their will to process it. I do not see it, though, as business as usual for the next 90 days, I would ask the staff to begin the transition to ramp down the work that we are charged with doing.
Mr. Chair, turning to the matter at hand, Mr. Manager, you brought forward some items that I'd like to talk about a little bit further in your correspondence to us, and I have spoken with others about previous... further in your correspondence to us, and I have spoken with others about previously, and they're of great concern to me. The Community Relations Advisory Committee, among other items, has attempted to become a quasi-forum for fair housing complaints, attempt to handle alleged unfair hiring practices in the private sector, alleged to handle alleged discrimination ordinances or the recommendation thereof that would regulate private business. And then, most notably for me, and most concerning for me, apparently recommending that a civilian review board be placed over top of the sheriff and the sheriff's office to weigh in on the sheriff's decision-making. I am totally opposed to all of those items for a number of reasons. They expose the county to tremendous liability whenever you attempt to, as a joint subcommittee or a joint committee with the City of Wilmington, handle matters that are properly before a variety of governmental entities. But the argument that we would have a joint committee that would tell the sheriff what he is or is not allowed to do is loathsome to me. The sheriff is elected by the people of New Hanover County. That is the civilian review board of the sheriff. The sheriff does not need another organization coming in and telling him how to run his office. And the fact that that came about is, to me, a pretty strong indication that this joint committee has perhaps misplaced its priorities. And in addition to your recommendation that this, uh, joint committee, uh, come to an end, you know, that portion of the analysis is, I think, really important. I, I would hope that not one person up here would believe that it would be appropriate for us to tell the sheriff how to run his office.
And, Mr. Chairman, if, if, if I may put a, a bright light on that. First and foremost, this is not a request from the sheriff's office. Everything that you recited, Commissioner Scalise, is a fact that at some point was contemplated, discussed by the, 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 the committee. There, there is no denying that. That is not recent discourse, but it is very prominent discourse in the nature of that body. The sheriff did not ask me to do this. I, I don't want anyone to believe that I'm recommending this because of that. He is aware that I was making the recommendation, acknowledged it, and made no express opinion to me other than to acknowledge and think that the item is going forward. But, but I don't want anyone to think that the sheriff, as an elected official, weighed in directly or indirectly on this recommendation. It is a, a body of work over the course of time, and I, I believe staff that's been involved with that would acknowledge there have been mission challenges, and in response, other committees have been created to do the work and are doing it effectively and well. So I just, Mr. Scalise, wanted to make that, that point clear, that this is not something that I'm doing or, or trying to, to, to minimize the sheriff or, or anything in that regard.
I understand that I wasn't trying to suggest that you were. I'm giving my policy preference and explaining that I don't agree at all with the notion of a civilian review board, and I'm happy to report that I spoke with the sheriff about it. The sheriff is totally opposed to the notion of a civilian review board.
Yes, sir. He, he is.
And I am, in suggesting that we move forward as you recommend, doing in part what I think is appropriate to make sure that the autonomy of our sheriff, a duly-elected member of this county, someone who is by state statute charged with any number of responsibilities, has the ability to do his job without improper interference. And it is, uh, for all these reasons, that I think that it is appropriate for us to move forward with this recommended action, and I may have further comments, but those are the ones that I have for right now.
Chris, it's, did the civilian review board happen?
It did not, because we were not a staff willing to bring that forward.
Well, I think the point is, it didn't happen. So, uh, and I appreciate you bringing forward that the sheriff was not the one that initiated all of this to make sure that he was clear. Is it, I'm sure it is not the policy of our county for, to restrict people from bringing forward ideas, ideas that have been used in other communities.
It, it is-
It may not work for our community, which is exactly what happened.
And so Commissioners Apple, as, as staff, we do think it is our responsibility to facilitate committee discussions, those appointed by this board, where you allocate time and resources to ensure that it is in keeping with the, the foundational documents, for lack of a better word. It, it would have never been contemplated and should never have been contemplated that the Community Relations Advisory Committee was a clearinghouse for housing complaints. The county had made the decision to eliminate the Human Relations Commission in '29 for that very specific reason. It was never intended to be a venue to bring discrimination complaints forward, and it certainly was never the venue to assert civilian control or commentary on practices of the sheriff. It was intended to do much of the work that the three committees I've cited are doing, which is around education, facilitation, engagement with our community. It, it did not ever intend to have a regulatory or a compliance function. There has absolutely been effort, I'm not saying in the recent history, but in the course of the committee, to do those things that did create conflict for your staff in the administration, because it was not the purview of the committee to explore those things. Now, when it was staffed at the city, different, different expectations perhaps, and maybe even different policies. So I do think it is our job to help boards stay compliant with their chartering documents.
I think that one of the, the documents includes the wording "to offer structured, principled input that strengthens public trust, ensures accountability, and upholds constitutional values for all residents of New Hanover County." I think that's-
Yes, sir.
-a pretty good description of it. And, uh, I, I recognize that a lot of what you're saying happened in the past. I hope this is not a reaction or a payback for those, that controversy in the past.
Not at all, sir. Uh, based on the, the work of the county today, I believe that it is an appropriate time to withdraw from that agreement and use the resources that you allocate to us in a different way, and enhance and accelerate the work of three other committees that we are the permanent staff to. I'm not at all disparaging the work of the committee. The, the committee, though, did have a very difficult time accepting the mission that was given to it upon creation, and it was very clear at the time that it was created what the county's expectations with that were.
One of the points you brought up in your comments there was about discrimination. And discrimination comes in many different forms, of course, I'm sure you're aware. Senior citizens, for instance, are discriminated against in our county every day. Handicapped citizens are also hard-of-hearing citizens are discriminated against, that's both children and adults with hard-of-hearing. Minorities are also discriminated against, including citizens, black, white, brown, that are illiterate or don't have literacy training. They are also, through the lack of opportunities they get from our educational institutions, uh, job advancement and opportunities. So there's all kinds of discrimination issues that this committee can and does deal with, and there is space for that outside of the three other committees that you have brought forward. My heartburn in this is that if we go after this, as we are, and say they are no longer relevant and thus they should go away, is that we are telling our population, our citizens, that we don't see this as a problem, when indeed it's a very big problem. And I, you know, I, I believe strongly we should keep it, as well as those other, again, three committees that you mentioned. If I sat on those committees, I would make the assumption that those were next in line to be done away with. And I think it's the wrong direction for our county, and I believe the vast majority of citizens, uh, would agree with me. These are all issues that need to be raised up and addressed, and these committees, which cost us nothing, other than a tiny bit of the staff support, gives a platform for them to become part of the community conversation. That's why I support the work of the CRAC, as well as the other three committees, which I think are all raised important issues in our community.
Commissioner May. I, I agree with, with everything that you said, and, and I would argue that work, in terms of dealing with inequities in our community that are real and factual, have been addressed and are being addressed by all aspects of our county government. Those are factors that we think about and we look for best practice in that space. And I'm very proud of what Linda Thompson and the Office of Civic Engagement have done. But, but I cannot sit here and, and say, and I don't know on staff who would, that the work that that office has been doing is informed because we have the Community Relations Advisory Committee. It is a small part of a broader tapestry of experiences that are brought to our attention, and we look to the county office that we've created to be the primary informer and facilitator of that. I share your concern, but the work that we are doing in the space to deal with those inequities has not been at the direction of the Community Relations Advisory Committee, and, and I'm not aware of significant interventions that have been proposed from that committee other than the things that I've spoken to that did create, in years past, serious policy conflict for staff and the board priorities at the time. So I just offer that. The, the work continues in the space of discrimination in all shapes and forms, and there's been a lot of work done, but that is at the, the consequence of, I believe, the county staff writ large in taking input from a variety of different organizations across our community.
I would just counter by saying, absent this committee, for the general public, there's no established platform to be able to come to on a regular basis and bring up issues. I know for someone like yourself, or many of our staff, we know what our different departments do, and it's very easy to have a conversation in the hallway, or on the telephone, or even by email. That's not true for our larger citizency, citizenry that's here in New Hanover County. And that's what these committees, all these committees, you have, the purpose of it, is to create that ease of being able to have that conversation, to bring forward very personal, sometimes, issues, and to have a platform to know that they would be heard at a larger level. We pull that away, and we've taken a step back 20, 30 years. I don't think it's a way that we see, uh, best serve our citizens. I'd like to make it easier for our citizens to be able to, uh, address these issues in any one of these committees.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I was wondering if y'all are done.
Yeah, I'm done, sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Pierce, did you want to go next?
I'll be sure. I, I sure will. Uh, so again, I'll just say that, no, that was great. Thank y'all for, for having that discussion. But I'll just say that again, the committees work for the, the committees that we appoint citizens to work at the pleasure of the county commissioners. And if we feel like that they have gotten off track, this is where it lands, and where the manager feels like it's gotten off track. And quite honestly, I was taken aback to read some of the things that you shared with us about the oversight, Citizens Oversight Committee for the Sheriff's Department, and I, we do not need to tie the hands of our Sheriff's Department. I think they're doing a fine job. I, I, I won't train law enforcement officers deciding what happens in those type of circumstances. And, and I like what you, um, have done in creating committees, Ms. Linda, to, um, have different organizations, and they're our county committees that we have the oversight on, and our staff is focused on our county committees. So I think that's, I, I intend to, uh, vote with the manager.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir. Um, again, I'm hearing the recommendation was based on policy from the board. What particular policy are you referring to, Mr. Manager?
I, I believe when you look back at the foundational documents of this Community Relations Advisory Committee, and, and it was very clear what should and should not be contemplated, and, and staff made very clear. And so there is conflict, and it is our job, I believe, to help boards comply with the rules of engagement that the county commission give to them, not for individual committees. And we could speak to any, any number of them who choose to create their own mission or create their own priorities and work plan. That comes to them from the county. So having been the manager at the outset and knowing the staff and the proposals that were put on my desk, I know they were in conflict, um, with, with what the board intended, because the board was clear about what it did not want when it created the Community Relations Advisory Committee. Housing, a forum for housing complaints, first among equals. The county had made the decision to withdraw from that space when it closed down the Human Relations Committee in 2009, which was oriented toward housing complaints. And so I use that as an example of what I knew the policy to be.
Okay, and well, I was just wondering, because I personally haven't had that conversation. So when you say the board, I just want to be clear, I haven't had that conversation. So-
Yes, ma'am, and these are things that have happened prior to-
Certain members of the board, but not myself.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, well, I just wanted to clarify, because I know it was kind of tied to financial decisions, and then it was tied to the budget and all that stuff. I just wanted to be clear.
Yes, ma'am, and if I could, I view the board as perpetual. I understand members change, but the Board of Commissioners never goes away. Um, I, but I respect and understand that different persons populate the commission at different times, but the board is perpetual.
So it's a majority decision, okay. So again, I just, I'd say it's a retraction for me of citizens to be part of government and to give the body feedback. Um, again, I'm just going to briefly read the purpose. "The committee shall be organized for the purpose of addressing community issues involving prejudice or discrimination on the basis of race, national origin, creed or religion, age, gender, sexual orientation, disability, or medical condition. Informing the appointing authorities and other organizations of their findings and making recommendations in an advisory capacity to the appointing authorities and other organizations as necessary." So it's advisory. They're, they're gonna, you know, sometimes these committees will come up and tell you, based on their personal experience, based on, you know, what the committee overall came up with, but they're just advisory. That doesn't mean that, you know, that they're, that you have to do it. They just tell you what they believe. So we're basically saying, I mean, and, and I agree with Commissioners Apple in the sense of, you're basically telling committees, if we don't like what you're, what we're hearing, you could be gone. And that's not the way community engagement works. I mean, I think sometimes we need to hear what people say, even if we don't like it, even if we don't agree with it. And our community, uh, sometimes feels a certain way, and, you know, I am concerned that now we're looking at, you know, now we've got committees that potentially, in the near future, I mean, what are they, are they going to fulfill their, their, um, promise of coming together as a committee and saying, hey, this is how we really, as a committee, feel, the people that we put there, that we appoint there, um, with worry that they're not going to, they're, they're going to be done away with because we don't like it? I just, I don't, I, again, this is a retraction of our citizens putting input and giving us their best input, and I don't agree with doing that again, just, just retraction. And I honestly am concerned that we're going to start picking all these committees off because we don't like it. So I, I am going to disagree, respectfully disagree with you. I don't think it's a good idea. And again, if there's something that we need to look at as far as, you know, I don't know, I, I know, anyway, I'm not going to give recommendations. I feel like I know how this is going to go, but I don't agree with it, and so I respectfully disagree. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one more comment to that. Let me say one more time. Committees are formed and appointed to by the pleasure of the county commissioner and to advise the county commission on issues that they've asked for. But if they go in a direction that the county commissioners do not agree with, like oversight over our sheriff's department, that's way off the rails for me. So I, I don't, I don't think we need to duplicate these committees, uh, and I, I just, they are there to work for us. They are there to work for the county commissioners and to advise the county commissioners.
Just, just one comment, Commissioner Vice Chair Pierce, um, they're doing what they were chartered to do. That's all I'm saying, and maybe they, maybe we don't like it, maybe we say-
That's not what I'm hearing the manager say.
Oh, I know, I'm hearing what the manager's saying too, but like, like you said, we're- Well, I know, I'm hearing what the manager's saying, too, but like you said, we're the board, so, I mean, I'm not saying I agree with that particular recommendation. At the same time, sometimes we need to hear the things we don't like, and we'll say, no, no, thank you. We don't think that's a good thing to do, I'm saying.
Mr. Chair, I move that we conclude county participation in jointly adopted bylaws with the City of Wilmington for the Community Relations Advisory Committee.
Second.
Hold on, please. Hold on, discussion, please?
We've been discussing for about fifteen minutes.
Well, I think actually more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we've been the dead horse.
That's all.
Go ahead.
I'd like, thank you. When a committee is, you just mentioned, Vice Chair Pierce, they go off the rails, it is appropriate for our staff to pull them back in and remind them again what they're there for. But it's not appropriate to fire them, or in this case, disband them, because they said something we disagree with.
Right, but that's what the manager's saying, is taxing his staff to keep pulling them back in. He's saying he wants to streamline his staff. But that's what I hear the manager say.
I don't, you know, we're talking about issues that happened a number of years ago, and we focused on this one, including the sheriff, that did not happen because it was inappropriate...
His staff prevented it.
Yeah, right, and they pulled them back on. But now reacting by saying, we're going to do away with the entire committee. And there's nothing to stop those other three committees that are out there from the same thing happening. I think the message that is...
He's sitting right there. He's not, he hasn't made a recommendation to get rid of any of the other committees.
Yeah, but if I sit on...
He only made a recommendation to get rid of these two.
Yeah.
Not yet.
If I sit on one of them...
Sorry, I didn't put you on the spot, but you are.
If I sit on any one of those other committees, I think the clear message is, be careful what you say. That is what, that's the message we're putting out to our citizens. And that's not the way it should be. We work for them. If they have an idea, if they have a thought, they should be able to come forward, in this case, using the conduit of these committees, to say what they want to say. If they disagree with what we're doing policy-wise, they should be able to have a platform to be able to say it. Now, we can say...
It's right there.
Yeah, yeah, it's right there. But these committees act as a larger funnel, as it were, or conduit, to be able to get the message to us. They shouldn't be afraid that if they say something, they'll be disbanded. That's all. I also want to point out that we have this wonderful Office of Civic Engagement that's there, but it's now been cut down to two people. Yet we are adding on all these other committees to do the work. It feels like we are reducing, what we're doing is a way of civic engagement. At the same time, we are growing, and we're cutting opportunities for the public to be able to address us. That's not transparency.
What does that have to do with transparency? I see the confused look on the manager's face. He just cut two committees to make it easier for his staff.
Yes, there are five, and if the board proceeds with, well, this, you will have taken one committee away and another from the planning office. So this is contracting the number of committees twofold, to scale with staff responsibility. And there are opportunity costs. To do one thing means something else can't be done, so there are real costs on the opportunity category. But these are also policies that are in keeping with the scope of work that has been given to our staff through action of the board.
It also reduces the opportunities for the public to be able to engage with their government. And that's where I'm stumbling over in all this. We're reducing that by eliminating these committees.
But the three already do exist. I'm not asking you to create the three that have been decided, referenced tonight. Those have longstanding practice and going concern with the county commission.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to belabor the point very much, but I do think it's very important to point out that everyone can and should reach out to the New Hanover County commissioners. They do. You all call me, you email me, I make my level best effort to respond to everyone, regardless of whether or not they agree with me. Nothing about that is changing. Our staff is available to answer the public's questions. I think that it is incorrect to frame this concluding of the participation as retributive. It is, in fact, an issue. It is part of why it is being contemplated. Our manager has told us that this committee struggled to understand its charge, and that involves staff time, that involves complications. But also, it is important to point out that whenever you create an official government committee, you are empowering that committee to say things that then take on a new force, take on a new energy. And that includes, for instance, the, I could easily see the question being posed, why is your committee advancing the notion that the sheriff should be under civilian oversight? And we can answer that question, and I hope that we would all answer that we do not agree that this sheriff should be under civilian oversight.
Which is exactly what happened.
I understand, but the fact of the matter is, nobody is being limited from expressing their opinion. We are just saying that this particular advisory committee has run its course. County manager has made a recommendation, based on a variety of factors, and I gave you my opinion for part of why I think that it has run its course. I don't think that we should be engaging in areas that expose us to liability, for instance, attempting to become a forum for fair housing complaints, hiring practices, discrimination. It's not a governmental body that's entitled to do that. And whenever you have examples of this, time after time again, even if we have to keep shooting them down, I don't really accept that, well, we shot it down, so it's not a big deal. The fact of the matter is, we have to keep going back and addressing issues that are not within the purview of this committee's charge. And for all of those reasons, as well as staff time, as well as everything else, it seems pretty clear to me that this is the best and most appropriate course of action. So I guess I just, I want to be clear that just because there's a committee that existed for some period of time, it's not like this committee has existed in perpetuity, somebody just made it up. It was made up in 2016. And now in 2025, we're contemplating that it doesn't exist anymore. It's not the New Hanover County Commission. We're still available to the public. The public can and does reach out to us. We're not discouraging them from doing that. And I don't think that it's fair or appropriate, although I understand the rhetorical point that you're making, to say that we don't want to hear from people. No, we want to hear from people. We have our own staff that addresses these issues on a day-in, day-out basis. We have committees that are associated with addressing these issues on a day-in, day-out We just are concluding our participation with a joint committee that we established with the City of Wilmington in 2016. It's just a policy change. It's not anything more than that.
The committee was created for a purpose. The purpose still exists. It has not run its natural course. It has taken different avenues that have gone off, and in some cases, has been pulled back. It still serves a purpose within our community. And I believe an important purpose for those people who don't have another forum, and they don't happen to have your cell phone number. They got mine, but, you know, they need all of us. Sorry, that was a joke. It's not, it's not as easy as you would think for a lot of people out there when they have an issue, to be able to reach forward to our county staff or to us. These committees provide that ability for people to step forward and to be heard, and I don't see a darn thing wrong with that.
Mr. Chair, there's a motion on the floor in a second.
Any more discussion?
I just wanted to say it is a retraction from community engagement. That's all. That's it, sir. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Next is a request by Craig Johnson with Herod and Cove Development LLC. Applicant on behalf of Ken, I can't say this very well, Nijan, and Mr. Nijan, property owners to rezon approximately 10.8 acres located at 6425 and 6437 Gordon Road, and 1927 Gordon Acres Drive from R-15 Residential to a CZD R-5 Residential Moderate High District for a 67-lot residential subdivision. This is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff, then the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed 15 minutes total each for their presentation, and an additional five minutes for rebuttal. Staff presentation will go first.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. The applicant is requesting to rezon approximately 10.8 acres from R-15 Residential District to a conditional R-5 Residential Moderate High Density District for a 67-lot, single-family residential subdivision. The site is currently zoned R-15, and is largely surrounded by R-15 zoning, with some nearby R-10 and the Ellington Farms Apartments to the east, which were annexed into the City of Wilmington. The aerial photography shows the site is currently wooded with single-family housing in the vicinity. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles, including the stub road, which is currently off Daniel Boone Trail to the northwest. Here is an example of nearby R-15 development. This is the Blendon Meadows neighborhood on Daniel Boone Trail. And here is an example of what you might see in a more dense, single-family development. The applicant's proposed concept plan shows the 67 single-family lots. In order to make this easier for everyone to see, I've broken this up into two slides. This is the portion of the plan closer to Gordon Road. The site plan shows the area for stormwater and open space. This is the portion of the plan further back. The road has been reconfigured around a significant oak tree in order to preserve the tree, as noted in the green circle here. This portion of the plan shows the stormwater management and open space towards the rear of the site, in addition to the proposed recreation area, as well as the proposed gated emergency-access stub road to Daniel Boone Trail. The applicant has also agreed to two bicycle and pedestrian connections to Gordon Acres Drive and Daniel Boone Trail, as evidenced by the arrows here and here. Lastly, the applicant has also proposed to plant two trees on each lot. This has been included as a condition. Access to the site is along Gordon Road, as well as the proposed emergency access on Daniel Boone Trail. This slide shows the proposed bike and pedestrian easements. While staff does prefer to see interconnectivity, in this particular instance, interconnectivity would not help disperse traffic in this area. NCDOT is working on the Gordon Road widening project, scheduled to finish in 2029. The proposed development would generate approximately 52 a.m. and 68 p.m. peak hour trips. This development would generate approximately eight more students than would be expected under current zoning conditions. This property is located on Gordon Road, roughly halfway between the intersections with Market Street and I-40. Gordon Road is in the process of being widened through an NCDOT project intended to increase capacity on this corridor. The surrounding area is largely residential, with some higher-density projects in the vicinity, including two, which have received special-use permits to exceed the maximum density of their R-15 zoning district. This single-family development, while more dense than the surrounding residential area, is single-family in character, which is keeping in style with the nearby neighborhoods. This is the fourth neighborhood within a quarter mile that is a dead-end cul-de-sac. However, this development does provide an emergency access to Daniel Boone Trail, and bike and pedestrian access to both Daniel Boone Trail and Gordon Acres Road. This project would support the county's strategic plan by providing housing, and while this part of the site is in the northeastern flood advisory study, the portion of this development that is in that area is mostly open space. The 2016 comprehensive plan classifies this area as general residential. This project is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan's recommendations for properties that are located in the general residential place type. The planning board considered this item at their June 5, 2025, meeting. There were public speakers in both support and in opposition to this project, and the applicant agreed to two additional conditions during the hearing, encompassing a CFPUA utility easement and tree retention. These are reflected in the motion. The planning board voted four to zero to recommend approval of this request, finding it consistent with the comprehensive plan because it fits into a largely residential area and is within the recommended density of the general residential place type. The board also found the request reasonable and in the public interest because the project is consistent with the character of the surrounding area, which varies in density but remains residential. Staff concurs with the planning board's recommendation. Staff have received additional public comments, which were provided to the board earlier today. Lastly, I'll add that if approved, development would be subject to TRC and zoning compliance review processes in order to ensure full compliance with all ordinance requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Tim Low is here with county engineering, and Ms. Caitlin Serza is here with the WMPO to answer any questions that come up under those topics. The applicant is here and has also prepared a presentation.
Anybody hear anything?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now, it's the applicant's presentation. Lou.
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Schaefer. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and with me I have our development team, Craig Johnson, who is the applicant developer, Charlie Kuzair, who is our civil engineer, as well as Don Bennett, who is our traffic engineer. As staff said, a TIA was not required for this, but traffic is always important, so Mr. Johnson took the extra step of hiring a traffic engineer to take a look at this project for him. So they're available if you have any technical questions that I'm not able to answer through the project. I did want to thank Mr. Dickerson. His staff report went through a lot of the background, the location, zoning. I do have slides on that, but I'll go through those pretty quickly, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to go back. Again, this project, we are asking for an R-5, single-family detached rezoning request for a density of just over six units per acre. As you can see, the current conditions, again, Mr. Dickerson had these in his project, wanted to show you. It does appear on Gordon Road that there is, you know, it's very sparse. However, if you can look right behind us, the density is much higher in that area, so we're not asking for anything out of the ordinary for this property. In fact, if you look at the top left, that Suncoast Drive, as you can see, they're very small lots with large houses. There's Ellington Farms, and then the adjacent residential properties as well. Here's just another aerial to get you acclimated to the location that we're requesting the rezoning for. And again, as Mr. Dickerson said, there are some multifamily properties and other higher-density projects up and down Gordon Road. I think another point to consider is that these projects, this project is also close to multiple green space areas in New Hanover County parks, that the residents and the families in the neighborhood would be able to take advantage of. Here's the site plan. As Mr. Dickerson said, it's a little difficult, so we borrowed his lovely staff report project to talk to you about. I think it's important to note that Mr. Johnson did take a lot of time with this project, as you can see, and I'll get back to this. There are some, right through here, in fact, I'm going to not know how to get rid of this when I draw on it, right through here is the stream and wetlands area. As you can see, there aren't lots in that space. He did leave a lot of buffers for that. Thank you. I appreciate that. There was a lot of conversation during the planning commission meetings about the houses being so close together. I just wanted to point out, in the performance residential right now in R-15, there is no minimum lot size if you do performance residential. So the building footprint on the lot could potentially be the same, but we did want to show you again, this is a cutout in the top left of what the housing footprint would look like, and then, again, a similar style already developed on Suncoast Drive under the current R-15 zoning in that neighborhood. In addition, the driveway after planning commission, I'm sorry, planning board is now going to allow for two cars, and the property owner, the homeowner, is able to request a two-car garage as an upgrade or addition to their home. There's also a tree in the front and back of each lot. We understand there was concerns about the tree canopy, and so Mr. Johnson has agreed to that. Those will be restricted for the HOAs, that the homeowner could not just buy the house and cut down the trees if they desired. And so Mister Johnson has agreed to that, those will be restricted for the HOAs that the homeowner could not just buy the house and cut down the trees if they desired. The progression of the site plan, again, the community meeting, there were over eighty-six homes. At the first planning board meeting, the site plan that was reviewed was eighty-one homes, there was an emergency only connection to Daniel Boone Trail. A bike pad connection to Gordon Acres Drive. And a six foot fence on each lot. Planning commission, co- um, comments from the neighborhood. We came back to planning board a second time and reduced it to sixty-seven homes. In addition to the emergency only connection to Daniel Boone Trail and the pedestrian bike connection to Gordon Acres Drive. There's also going to be a C F P U A easement to Gordon Acres Drive. That property and neighborhood does not have water and sewer right now, so this will be able to help them better connect. Through the utilities that Mister Johnson, if approved, would be putting through his neighborhood. As I said, there's also the additional two parking spaces in the driveway, parking was a concern with an option for a two car garage. Um, they engineers were able to find additional overflow parking on the site. And the tree safe conditions that you see in your packet now were also added. Again, I don't think we need to go through this, but I always feel it's important, there is a housing need. And the housing need is also, single family detached houses, especially in this price point, there just aren't a lot. I looked just this morning and there are only about fifteen houses, single family houses. Up in this area of the county, and so I think this project is gonna provide that gap. Everybody wants to know what it'll look like, and so we wanted to provide some pictures of, uh, potential illustrations in the elevations of the houses. Again, with the optional two car garage, and now they would have two driveway spaces. Again, the houses are gonna range between about thirteen and sixteen hundred square feet. Here's just another elevation for y'all to see. And another, another floor plan. Stormwater is always a big concern, and again, our traffic en- uh, sorry, our civil engineer is here. He's also been in contact with Mister Jameson and Mister Low about the county projects. And so, we wanted to make sure that you are aware the, there is a county project right now in this area. We do know that stormwater is an issue on Gordon Acres Drive. But hopefully, the updates from D O T, as well as the county project. As well as coordination with our private civil engineers will help to handle the stormwater in this area. Traffic is also another big concern, and as I said, um, we have a traffic engineer here, but I did want to show you. The typical cross section for Gordon Acres Drive, it will have a sidewalk, we will connect to that. So there will be an opportunity to get to all of those county parks around. Um, in addition, there was some concern from the neighbors about a possible U-turn in front of our site. However, based on the current designs, which are always subject to change. The taper in front of our property for the U-turn would be too long for people to come out and immediately cross the two lanes of traffic to get into U-turn. So most likely, they would have to go up to the next U-turn. I know that was a concern for some of the residents on Gordon Acres Drive, that they would be fighting to get in that U-turn lane with our residents. But based on the current design, we don't think that's likely. In addition, um, these improvements are already underway, if anybody's driven up Gordon Road, you can see that they are underway. And our project is not gonna be built tomorrow if it is approved tonight, there's still. T R C reviews and stormwater permits and all of the other reviews and approvals that would have to go along with that. So it's not like you're dumping all the, the new traffic before the improvements are done. We do think that we comply with all of the, um, requirements for a conditional rezoning. Again, this is classified as general residential allowing it to eight units per acre, we've requested six. It also is strategic infill development, providing affordable, single family detached housing. It's consistent with the future land use map and classification. And again, the proposed project does remain consistent with surrounding, single family neighborhoods while supplying general density. The neighborhood will also provide water and sewer and an easement for connections to the adjacent properties. And it's plenty of open space between the buffer, open space and buffers with the wetlands on the site. And again, all of our experts are here if you have any particular project related questions, thank you.
Where is the water and sewer now?
Yes, sir, um. Charlie's coming, um, let me see if I can get up the site plan while he's coming up, so he can kind of explain to you where everything's currently located.
Good evening, my name's, uh, Charles Kuzair with Intracostal Engineering. Um, if you look at the large channel that goes, um, through the property there, there's actually a, a gravity sewer line. Um, by Cape Fear Public Utility Authority that goes through the property there, so we would connect. Just within our roadway at that, that larger, um, channel for the gravity, um, sewer. And there's, there is water in Daniel Boone, but there's also water on Gordon Road as well. So we can, we can connect to either one of those.
So the ne- the other neighbors could get water or sewer. It's already there.
Yeah, it's, it's right there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I have a question about the, the cut through road or emergency stump, whatever you called it. That's not open, that's only open for emergencies, or are people gonna be able to cut through there to get out?
No ma'am, there'll be what's called a Knox box gate, um, which means that it will be closed. And then if emergency access needs to be, um, used, all the emergency, um, E M T, fire, sheriff. Have the code or the key for that. If for some reason there is an obstruction on Daniel Boone Trail. So that they, the residents maybe can't get out if there's an accident or something at the front. We would of course then be able to open it for emergency access for them as well.
And just remind me again, is Daniel Boone Trail paved or not?
Daniel Boone Trail is paved, Gordon Acres Drive is not, but they are both private roads.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Amy, what, what happens if, uh, we get, you know, uh, fifty or a hundred year storm? And the entrance way to, uh. You know, this project, as well as Gordon Acres, as well as Daniel Boone, is affected. Is all of these, and one more, uh, I think you noted there are four, one way in, one way out, right there.
Yes, sir.
This, uh, stream goes through all of those at one point or another.
Yes, sir.
Because there is no connectivity, uh, we have all those communities that are trapped.
That, that is true, um, if that were to happen, I do hope that, that it, I do hope that it, it doesn't. And our, our civil engineer and the county engineer is, is tasked with that as well. Um, as you know, fire access only requires two, um, and, and we are providing that. There's just no opportunity for connection in the back because it is completely developed out.
So if you, back to your, uh, slide about, uh, the hundred year storm, I think I saw.
Yes.
Ten inches, uh, excuse me, fourteen inches. Do you remind me again how much we had with Florence?
Can I get Charlie to answer that for you?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, he doesn't know right off the top of his head Florence either, I'm sorry, we don't have that for you.
I do.
Oh, okay. I figured you didn't ask a question you didn't know the answer to, but.
Anyway, it's twenty-eight to thirty inches, depending on where you were in New Hanover County. Uh, some received as little as twenty-two.
Sure.
But, uh, that's a lot of rain, and that was an unusual event.
It is.
I'm, I'm worried about, uh, emergency access and the connectivity, uh, that we don't have here. And I know just from what we've heard from our planning department that there were conversations with both, uh, you know, neighboring communities. About trying to open that up, and I, I thank you, uh, but neither wanted to, and they're for a variety of reasons. Is there another, um, another way out in your looking at this, planning wise?
No, sir, um, I, I know that the title attorney, which was not, it was another firm. But I know that they, they considered all of those other ways in and out. I will say that the hope is, and again, it's, it's a hope, it's a plan, but the engineering is intended to design so that. Hopefully those things won't happen in the future, the county project, um, and our project is looking at that whole region. To help improve things, um, not that it can never happen, I would never say that because tomorrow we'd get a storm where it happened. But every possible planning opportunity and every possible civil engineering opportunity are being made to hopefully protect the residents. Um, it wouldn't be good for, for Mister Johnson if that happened either. And, you know, if, if one is able to be accessed again with this project, the people on Daniel Boone Trail would at least be able to come through the newer road. With, with the connectivity.
Yeah, assuming, well, I think I made my point.
Yes, sir.
They all have the same, uh, issue, uh, of that stream running through. Can I shift gears slightly, um, on the aerial view, it looks as though it's heavily wooded prior to the project.
It, yes, sir, it is, and thank you for bringing that up. Um, the condition that was brought forth at planning board is, um, that any trees in the, um. Proposed open space and the stormwater areas would not be removed unless they need to be removed for essential site improvements. That was a concern of, um, planning board and the neighbors was the existing tree canopy. So Mister Johnson agreed to that. In addition, knowing that they're gonna start out as smaller trees, he also agreed to, to plant the two, um, in the front and backyard. So that was, um, his concession to that. In addition, as you are aware, if this were developed under the current R fifteen. You know, the, the trees could come down even in those tree safe areas with mitigation, and he will still have to comply with all the mitigation rules of the county.
Have you done a tree survey?
Yes, sir, and it is, um, in your packet, I did not have it included here.
You have an approximate of how many trees will need to come down?
There, there was a count, I don't have it, I can go back through my, um, documents and see if I can find that for you before the end of the hearing.
Yeah, the number I, uh, saw somewhere there was around eleven hundred, do you think that is consistent with what?
That's the total on the site, that is not all that will be removed.
Ah, well, thank you. So it'll be much less?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if you could dig that out, I'd really appreciate it.
Sure, we'll look for that.
I know that's a, a concern.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, for everyone. Uh, I think I'll hold at that point, I, I'll have some other questions later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have a question about the, um, price point. Yes, ma'am, you brought up the affordability component, do you know what the price point will be?
Right now, uh, Mister Johnson is looking about three seventy-five. It's gone up based on the number of units we've lost through the, the process.
I, 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 I agree with Commissioner's apple, I would like to know more about the tree loss, because I know this area is very wet. And I, I know a few residences have, uh, basically said that they're concerned about that. I mean, and having gone through Florence, and I hate to bring up Florence, but that's really the, what we have to kind of gauge what storms are like. Not to mention the one that was on Carolina Beach, they're a little bit different now, and I am concerned that the loss of trees plus that creek and. I just, you have a slide that says the hun- hundred years, a new twenty-five, should that be reversed? So I feel like this twenty-five years should be like, more like hundred years. Am I reading that wrong?
No, it's.
Hold one hundred year storm is now becoming twen- the twenty, meaning we're gonna get hundred years more often, okay, I'm just making sure I read that correctly, thank you.
I think what she's trying to show in that chart is the county's old requirements are in the column under old. And then new requirements, these are the new design storms that we have to meet. So what before was a twenty-five year storm was an eight inch storm.
Yeah.
And now it's a ten, ten point three inch storm.
That's right, to, thank you, sir.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know if it's appropriate time to ask county staff anything, or do we need to wait until after the presentation, Mister Chair?
Should I ask it one more time?
I need to ask the county staff a question.
One minute, one minute.
Go ahead and ask.
Okay. I'll wait.
She needs to ask me a question.
Hi, so I, I, I've been reading that, uh, is this area in a flood plain now, or not, or? I felt like I read that in some of the paperwork here.
Yes ma'am, so portions of this site were identified in the most recent northeast county flood advisory study. It's not a regulatory study as identified in our ordinance. Uh, that was done to advise residents whose properties fall in the area. Hey, this is something that you might want to look into further, but it's not regulatory like the, the other flood plain maps that we have.
So you're referring to the presentation that was given to the county a couple of months ago? Where they were fixing the FEMA, the maps that didn't, that kind of cut off. Do you remember, does anybody here remember that study that was done? I know, I, I feel like they were incomplete maps and that's why that study was done, even though it wasn't regulatory by FEMA standards? Rebecca might know.
Yes, uh, that was the flood study that was presented to you at your agenda review a couple of, um, months ago. Um, you were correct in your recollection, um, when FEMA studies, um, flood risk in a particular area. Sometimes they don't do the same level of detailed modeling. So the county paid to have that same detailed modeling done in those areas where it was missing. And we found that there was a greater current flood risk for some of the properties in this area. Than the residents may have been aware of, um, prior to that, so they have been informed of that over the past couple of months. And so I believe you did get some comments referring to that information.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and someone to follow up, so Zach, is it in a flood plain?
Yes, sir, but not the same kind of regulatory flood plain, Rebecca's coming to my rescue again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it is in an advisory flood risk area, yes, so you could consider it a flood plain, but it is not a FEMA firm map flood plain.
So if a person goes to get a loan on the property, is the bank gonna require them to have flood insurance?
Not that I'm aware of.
So it's not in that kind of a flood?
Correct.
Well, can I just add that FEMA didn't continue the map, that's why it's not advisory, it's just not a FEMA map. But it's a study we did to show us where the potential for flooding can happen. And the recommendation from what I remember was, you probably should get flood insurance, but you're not recommending that because you're not FEMA, that's what I heard.
Correct, it is not a requirement of the federal flood insurance program for residents in this area to get that in order to be able to get a bank loan.
Then why, excuse me, go ahead.
No, 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 I thought everybody was through.
Yeah. Then why did we do the additional, if we're not going to change our opinion on anything, why did we do the extra study or the survey?
Com- Commissioner, I, I'll interject there, as staff, we thought it appropriate because as you'll recall, it came from some of the panels breaking off and hard lines. In the northern part of the county, and that didn't make sense, so upon analysis, the team wanted to do more modeling. So it, it certainly is a flood risk, but what you don't have the authority to do is to in fact compel. Property owners to comply with the national flood insurance program standards. Your ordinance in terms of free board and the like is not necessarily applicable as well. So it's information that the homeowner can use to their advantage and make decisions, but it does have lim- it's got no regulatory control. On the federal insurance side, it may or may not be something that this board wants to contemplate. When it's making conditional rezoning decisions, you could never require them to have flood insurance. But, a- and Jordan may want me to stop, we've never talked about it. It may allow you though to require the base flood elevation because your ordinance requires that. So, um, it, it's primarily informational.
How does the public access that information?
We actually have.
I'm gonna stop talking.
Commissioners, we actually have a separate web page on our website that provides additional information. About the findings of that flood study and more information on, um, what this actually means. We did hold a couple of months ago an open house for property owners who were impacted by this. Um, but if there are any questions after looking at the information on, on the website, we do have staff who are available to talk through residents. And other property owners, so they know what some of this information means.
But, but I would just like to add, anybody moving to New Hanover County should know that we're surrounded by water, we're coastal community, and we're at flood risk whether you're in a flood zone or not. But this property is not in a required flood zone, so they would not have to purchase flood insurance by requirement. Only if they would wish that extra level of insurance.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm just worried about the person who is trying to find their starter home, which is amazing, you know, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Yeah, I'm just worried about the person who is trying to find their starter home, which is amazing, you know, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is a starter home. And they, they wouldn't know to go to a separate website off of our planning website to find this information that's there. So, how do we, how do we tag that to them? Or how do we send people to that? Or are realtors required to reveal this extra layer of flood survey?
So, it is my understanding, and I, I can't speak completely for, for the realtors, that if they are aware of a particular piece of information and they have the obligation to share it.
Yeah.
There are some potential steps this board may wish to take if you feel like that is a risk and you were to want to approve this project. There may be some conditions that the applicant would agree to where they could alert some of the property owners of this information so that they would be aware.
Yeah, don't you think that makes sense?
That is something that, upon the direction of this board, we would be glad to recommend. I will mention that this particular application was submitted about the time some of this information was being finalized. So, I don't believe that there is any intent by the applicant to, to elude that. But some of this information was not public until after this had already started going through the approval process.
I'm sure not, there's no intent, but I think it would be good. Flooding is a major issue in New Hanover County. So, oh, it looks like Amy's about ready to burst behind you with new information.
Thank you, and I apologize. I did want to say, Mr. Dickerson, this did come up at, at the last meeting. And Mr. Dickerson and our engineer were looking at that and the overlays. Right now, we're only showing with those new maps that two of our lots may potentially be within that, that area. And they are the ones right near the stream. And so, again, that was designed, taken into consideration. The county was kind enough to, to give us those maps, and we did take a look at that. From our engineer, we believe that the base elevation in our slabs would be outside of any hazard area. But of course, that's something that they would look at as they go through TRC and, and review.
Thank you, Amy, that puts it much more in proportion, talking about two lots.
Two lots, yes, sir.
That would be affected.
Mm-hmm.
So, some way we could tag those two lots so going forward, they would know to look at that. All right, I see, great.
Yes, yes, sir, absolutely. Based on my site plan and the overlay, I have it being lot seven and lot fifty-nine. But we can double check that with staff as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple more questions, is that all right? Yeah, good. Okay, I'll give you a heads up. Zach or, or Amy, I don't know, you, you pointed out the lot size for visual reference for Sun Coast Drive, I can think it was. How big are those lots?
I can find out real quick on average, perhaps.
Yeah, I mean, the, what I, if I saw my packet there, the average size of the new lot size here is thirty-two hundred square feet, which is very small, but you know, that's what it is. My question is, as I'm looking at it, here we go, oh, great, thanks for bringing that up. Is that what I'm looking at here, is thirty-two hundred square feet on Sun Coast Drive?
I, I can look that up real quick.
Well, Mr. Dickerson looks that up. I do think there, they might be larger lots, they seem to be larger homes when I, when I last looked at them. The point that we were trying to make, at, at Planning Board, there was a lot of question about, does anybody want a house that takes up your whole yard? Who would buy a house where you don't have a backyard? And so, that's kind of what this was intended to show.
I see.
That lots of people are happy to buy a patio home or a home where you might not have a backyard. That's also why there were questions about how close are you to other green spaces. So, in addition to all the open space areas that we're gonna have on our project, you're also in close proximity to those parks that you would be connected to from the sidewalk. But it was more lot coverage and not lot size because that question did come up at Planning Board.
I see. Amy, while you're there, the, can we talk for a minute about the thousand foot rule? Length of, of a road.
Yes, sir.
Uninterrupted.
Yep.
You mentioned there are some breaks that are in here. I think I see them right around the oak that's the calming device or the.
Yes, sir.
Traffic calming, yeah. How, how big are those brakes?
I'm not sure, let me check the site plan to see how big those are. And in addition, just so you're aware, we were able to find some additional overfellow parking in those spots as well.
I see.
Mr. Mr. Johnson said that they're about the size of a lot, so it would be about a lot brake size.
I see.
To break up the, the block length.
So, there's only two of those required to break up the thousand foot length?
Yes, sir.
The fences that go in the backyards, who maintains those fences?
That would be the homeowner, once they're put in. And then, of course, the HOA would oversee that they're maintained in a, in a manner that the HOA would want them to be maintained.
So, somebody doesn't want to, because my sense is, well, let me back up. There's a question. Is there any controls over who buys these lots?
No, sir.
So, we could have an investment firm purchase twenty of these?
Yes, sir.
And turn it into a portfolio of rentals? Renters are not known for keeping up their properties.
Yes, sir.
The back fences, which I know were a point of controversy, no, you know, incentive or whatever you wanna call it, for the neighboring people. The fences are not kept up, and you know, two years, three years in our climate, they start falling apart. Who is gonna be responsible to make sure they are maintained?
The homeowners association, and we already have an agreement in the current conditions that you see that we would have something in our homeowners' covenants regarding the tree protection. We'd be happy to include something in the homeowners' documents that say that the fences must be maintained as well if that's something the board decides to vote as a condition.
I think that'd be good, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I did notice that the presenter still has six minutes on the clock.
Thank you, I was through my presentation, but I do think. I, I, I was through my presentation. I do think, though, that there might be some other people signed up, so I don't want to take time from anybody else, I apologize. But I'm happy to answer your questions as, as much as you have them. And, Mr.'s apple, I was able to find just real quick, I could not find the whole tree survey, I will continue to look. But thirty-four significant trees will be removed. I'll continue to look for the tree survey, the complete tree survey, but thirty-four significant trees will be removed.
And description of significant?
The county definition of, of significant.
Address that a little more directly. Significant trees are defined by species and diameter or breast height, so it, it varies depending on which type of tree. For example, a magnolia tree is considered significant at eight inches versus a longleaf pine, which is considered significant at eighteen inches. So, there's trees on the site that fall under that category.
I see. And anything below that would not be considered an issue as far as saving, correct?
So, certain trees on site would be documented, trees which require a permit to remove, and then significant trees require a permit and mitigation.
Do we know how many documented trees will be removed?
I don't, not.
Okay, I know, I see Amy and Craig huddling there, so that's good. Amy, if you want to continue with your presentation, I think I was certainly a part of hijacking that, and I apologize.
Not at all, I think we're finished, we'll just save any time for rebuttal if we may, and I'm happy to answer questions.
And I'll confer with the chair, the person that has signed up to speak in favor of the project can come during the six minutes.
Thank you.
I don't have the sheet, Mr. Chair.
We have one person wanting to speak, Jared Patterson. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jared Patterson, I reside at fifty-one forty-nine Nicholas Creek Circle here in New Hanover County. And I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning. I serve as CEO of a five oh one C six organization devoted to smart and sustainable growth and capital investment that creates economic opportunity and quality of life for all those who call New Hanover County home. Our organization represents eight business and trade associations with ninety-four hundred collective members, including the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce. This project directly addresses a major housing need in our community. Single-family homes priced below four hundred thousand dollars are in very short supply. Research by Bowen National Research and others have shown North Carolina's housing gap will reach eight hundred thousand in just five years. And in New Hanover County, our housing gap is tracking ahead of the state average. Right now, in New Hanover County, our population and job growth exceed the growth in our housing supply, putting upward pressure on home prices and rental rates, making it harder and harder for many in our community to find safe and affordable housing. This is felt especially hard by those looking for affordable single-family homes. Often, public hearings such as these are dominated by a vocal few who oppose new home construction for various reasons, often of personal interest. And of course, those whose voices are seldom if ever heard at these hearings are the countless individuals who so desperately want the opportunity to own a home in the community where they work and serve. Our teachers, nurses, medical technicians, first responders, tradespersons, public employees, single parents and young families. These are the voices that we don't often hear in these hearings, and today, I encourage you to remember them. Remember those who want to pursue their American dream of homeownership in New Hanover County but can't because our housing market lacks the affordable options they so desperately need. Today, they look to you for help. This proposed development would extend new opportunity to sixty-seven of those families. It would do so in a thoughtful and responsible way adjacent to similar housing and public amenities are convenient as well as commercial services which limit traffic impacts. This is the right project for the ideal location to meet a widely acknowledged need in our community, and I strongly encourage you to approve the rezoning. Thank you for your service, for your time and for your consideration.
Thanks, sir. All right, we'll switch over to. Speakers in opposition, and the first one is Kim Turner. Before, before you start, I just want to make sure you know, there's one, five people gonna speak. In between the five of you, you have fifteen minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, Vice Chair, Chairman. My name is Kim Turner, my husband Bill and I live at nineteen oh seven Gordon Acres Drive, directly adjacent to the land proposed for rezoning to accommodate the Heron Cove development. I respectfully urge the Commissioners to deny this rezoning request from R-15 to R-5 and instead collaborate with the developer to create a plan that aligns with the environmental character and the infrastructure capacity of our neighborhood. I, I will just say, I have some flooding concerns. I'm sure you read my notes that were in your packet this morning, but you know, a flood is a flood. If we get another twenty-two to twenty-eight inches like what we got during Florence, the structure of the stormwater ponds that are scheduled to be put right behind my home are not gonna hold, and my home is gonna flood. And on Gordon Acres Drive, a corner of my property is, is in that floodplain. I just found out about that at the same time I found out about this project scheduled to go in, right in my backyard. So, those four stormwater ponds are right next door to that floodplain. And despite assurances from the developer and the stormwater officials, my concern is not speculative, you've even said that yourselves. It stems from real flooding events, observable changes in our rainfall patterns, and a history of poor drainage in our nearby area. I'm also concerned about the enforcement of the maintenance of the stormwater ponds in time to come. I've met with the stormwater folks, I've met with Mr. Johnson, the developer, and, and I still am not convinced that when I'm eighty years old, I'm not still gonna be trying to make sure that those stormwater ponds are not gonna be causing flooding in my backyard. My husband is eighty-one and in failing health, I will be his caregiver for the rest of his life. And now, I'm gonna be faced with worrying about whether my property is gonna flood or not. I'm not sure that the enforcement of the maintenance is gonna be intact with all the cuts in different government departments. I'm probably gonna be policing this myself. I'm also concerned, very concerned about the destruction of the tree canopy and habitat. You read my notes, you've seen the things I've referenced too. Over two-thirds of this tract is mature woodland, it's home to a diverse array of wildlife and plant species. And in my opinion, the proposed twenty-nine percent open space, though technically compliant, cannot replace the ecological value of thirty to forty-year-old trees and an intact habitat. The April twenty twenty-five New Hanover County Tree Canopy Report emphasizes environmental stewardship and warns that tree loss from northern county development is unsustainable. It clearly states that not, not all trees are equal, and Amy referenced that. Different trees have different value within that habitat. I also have some climate concerns. The rezoning facilitates a dense, high-impact development that will contribute to deforestation, carbon release and loss of natural cooling, all worsening Wilmington's urban heat island problems. We must consider the long-term consequences of sacrificing green buffers for the short-term housing gains. I also want to comment about several Planning Board members, their concerns. One called this project a bit of an overreach and emphasized the need for more thoughtful design and connectivity. Another cited concerns about lot size and density, noting the straight road layout was just out of place. You all mentioned that, discussed that. A third raised similar issues, especially regarding the tree canopy loss. While the revised plan slightly reduced the number of homes from eighty-one to sixty-seven, the core issues, the density of the development, the flood risk and the ecological loss remain the same. This minor adjustment should not justify approval here. Upon meeting with Mr. Johnson, and we discussed mutual frustrations of some of my concerns, him calling it a catch-twenty-two situation. While I don't have all the answers, I do believe it is appropriate at this point in time to take a pause and look at the environmental concerns and the long-term concerns of a development like this. We are living in a time when local government must show leadership to balance, in balancing growth with long-term financial responsibility. New Hanover County must balance this growth with sustainability. Just because a plan meets minimum regulatory standards does not make it, make the decision right to develop it in that way. Will this be another situation where we have to fix the sins of our past, as Mr. Heinz said? Because it'll be too challenging, just simply because it was too challenging to make a better decision at the time, and we couldn't be bothered. What if by the time our grandchildren are trying to fix our sins, it's too late to save the precious natural resources we enjoy today in this county because the ecosystems that now sustain us have been destroyed? I ask the Commissioners to uphold the priorities allowed in the Tree Canopy Report and to ensure that environmental integrity is not sacrificed for expediency. Please reread your initiatives from the report and make this rezoning decision based on what you, our elected officials, deemed important to establish to begin with. Please deny this rezoning request and reevaluate the broader regulatory framework. Please work with Mr. Johnson to propose a plan that genuinely respects the land's ecological and community value. Thank you for your time, your consideration and your service to our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Sarah DeRice?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your questions and concerns. My name is Sarah DeReese, and I live on Gordon Acres Drive, a private gravel road which is adjacent to the proposed Heron Cove development. I speak today as a neighbor, a licensed real estate broker, and as representative of the Gordon Acres Roadway Association of twenty-four properties in that development. When we first learned about the rezoning request by Heron Cove, our neighborhood was understandably concerned. The initial proposal was eighty-one homes on just ten-plus acres, and it was far too dense for the area and threatened both our community character and the surrounding environment. But, we also saw potential. Gordon Acres has long struggled due to poor planning in the past. In the late nineteen seventies, our developer abandoned the subdivision during the real estate downturn, leaving residents without a recorded plat or functioning HOA, no formal road maintenance, no water or sewer solutions. We have four homes on the front of the road that now have water and sewer due to the Ellington Farms community. But after that storm drainage branch, none of the home sites toward the end of the road have access to water and sewer, even though we have repeatedly tried. end of the road have access to water and sewer, even though we have repeatedly tried to remedy that. When the Harren Cove developers presented their first plan, Option One, it included an interconnectivity option that would link our development, or their development, to Gordon Acres Drive. This could have been a win-win, improving safety for Harren Cove, paving our private road, which is gravel, and we were open to the idea and initiated good-faith discussions. However, once it became clear that financial participation in upgrading our road would be required, the developer redrew that option and instead chose a design with a single dead-end road, eliminating opportunities for improved traffic circulation. As a result, unless the board would require interconnectivity and infrastructure improvements, our neighborhood is left with all the negative impacts and none of the benefits. One of the discussions y'all had in the previous, in this meeting, was about affordability housing, and maybe this would be a situation where some of these gap funds might be used with this developer to aid in infrastructure for our community. Thanks to the Planning Board process, some positive changes have been made. The proposed density has been reduced, and a utility easement through the lot currently addressed at nineteen-twenty-seven Gordon Acres Drive has been added to help mitigate the impact. Tonight, I'm here to ensure the terms of that easement are clearly defined. Specifically, we ask that the water and sewer connection point be placed at the northeast corner of the lot nineteen-twenty-seven Gordon Acres Drive, allowing for a direct tie-in along Gordon Acres Drive, so that we don't have to go into their development to put in piping, that it comes to us. A new request is that we ask for a fire hydrant be installed at that location as well, that will address the existing gaps in emergency water access and to provide essential fire protection for our neighborhood. Right now, we do not have a hydrant except at the front portion of the road. These are minimal, reasonable requests. They won't eliminate the burden this development places on our community, but they will help offset its impact, and that's something this board can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Jane?
Thank you, members of the board, and in the interest of time, I'm here on behalf of the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees, and we've sent our official position to all of you on July second, and I hope you all received that and had a chance to look at it. I would just say on behalf of the Alliance that this is, we feel that this rezoning right now is just premature. It's premature to consider it. You've got a lot of the flood control study is ongoing, it needs to be completed for this area. We just learned about a tree inventory and study that has not been shared with the public, it's not available. These things should be done first before you do the rezoning. But what I'd like to do now is to turn over the mic to my colleague, who's Professor Emeritus of Forestry and Forest Soils, Wetlands, Wetlands Management, Professor Jim Gregory.
Sheriff Ivan Bark and Commissioners, I am James Gregory. I reside at eight oh one Midland Drive in Wilmington. I represent myself, the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees, and a very large majority of New Hanover County citizens who are frustrated about the continuing loss of forest ecosystems due to high-density developments as this one is proposed. We have two recommendations. First, deny the zoning request to provide the opportunity, as Bill has suggested, for the applicant and the Planning Department to reevaluate the proposed project in light of two key environmental characteristics of the site. First, the forest. Approximately seventy percent of the project site is covered with a dense, mixed pinewood hardwood forest that has a very hydrologic, very high hydrologic and ecological value. The presence of that forest was not mentioned in any of the materials provided to you by the applicant. It was also not mentioned to you in any of the materials provided by the Planning Department. The revised concept plan depicts a large stormwater pond, a cul-de-sac street, and about four to three small lots in the forested area. These so-called essential site improvements can only be accommodated, as shown on the plan, by clearcutting and destroying that approximately seven-and-a-half to eight acres of very high-functioning forest. The forest has a hydrologic sink. On average, about thirty to forty percent of the rainfall received by a forest like this, it drains to groundwater, but sixty to seventy percent is lost to evapotranspiration back in the atmosphere. Removing this forest will make that site much wetter immediately when you take that transpiration pump off. Replacing that forest with a very high percentage of impervious surface will only exacerbate the flooding potential of that site. As already noted, the multi-layered and species-rich character of the forest also contributes to providing habitat for large numbers of bird and mammal species. The second issue is the hydrologic character of the site, and the surrounding area has not really been adequately addressed in this plan in terms of how stormwater will be managed. The potential for flooding has already been mentioned. Crossing the Harren Cove site are two jurisdictional perennial streams that were produced by deep channelizing of former first-order channels, likely in the fifties or sixties. There is also a network of old agricultural drainage ditches in the area of this site that, again, probably are seventy to eighty years old. It is highly likely those ditches have not been maintained, no one will take responsibility for them, and they probably are no longer effective conduits of stormwater drainage. Thus, we have a situation, just repeating what has already been said, this area is going to be subject to a very high potential for flooding. Our second recommendation, require the applicant to consider a cluster concept, cluster of the houses that are allowed on the south end of that project, and preserve and save as much of that forest as you possibly can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hollinsworth? Ms. Hollinsworth must have left. Okay, so now we will go back to the applicant for, they have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Pond maintenance and stormwater. This project will have to go through a full stormwater review. Mr. Kuzier has already done his initial evaluations, initial requirements for the rezoning application, so it's not premature. It follows the rezoning process that the county has set forth. The county stormwater staff, as well as state stormwater rules, will all have to be followed and maintained through the process. That's also maintenance. I know for a fact that you can call NCDEQ, and they will come out if there's a maintenance issue, and they will cite the stormwater permit holder if things are not being maintained as they're supposed to for the stormwater. And I'm sure the county stormwater is responsive as well. Mr. Jamison came out to my neighborhood and spoke at our homeowners association one time to talk to us about the juncture between county maintenance and state maintenance, as well as the private ownership maintenance, and I think Dr. Gregory even spoke about that. There's probably stormwater on this site that hasn't been maintained. That will all be brought up to current codes. Tree canopy, as I said, right now, we submitted the tree survey that has been required by the county, that is required as part of the application, and right now, if an R-15 went in, there would be no requirement that they do those two significant tree save areas or plant additional trees outside of the mitigation requirements. Gordon Acres Road and Daniel Boone Trail are both private rights of way, so even if the homeowners association, which is an ad hoc association for Gordon Acres Drive, were to approve a full connection, according to our title attorney, you would have to get every single person on each of those roads to agree to allow you to use their roads. That's why we provided the emergency vehicle connection. Let me see, I want to make sure I'm addressing everything. The private easement, absolutely, that is still a required condition. If a fire hydrant were to be placed in that area, frankly, that's just more space that would need to be cleared of trees so that the fire department could get to that fire hydrant. I was unable to review the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees report, we didn't receive that, so I don't have specifics, but again, we are complying with county code regarding tree removal and tree mitigation. In addition, I did want to say, Ms. English from the chamber spoke at Planning Board, but she was unable to attend, she's out of town, but you do have her comments as part of your Planning Board meeting packet. If there are any specific issues I didn't address, our engineers would be happy to address those for you.
Anybody have any questions? Bob?
Yeah. Amy?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. What is the planned stormwater capacity for the site? Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, yes.
Twenty-five years, so the minimum?
Yes, sir.
Even though we've just gone over several scenarios that would benefit, was there any discussion about going to a voluntarily? I understand what the minimum is.
If you can let Mr. Johnson and Mr. Kuzier talk about that.
Sure.
Craig Johnson, Harrington Homes, my wife and I own our home building company here in Wilmington. Mr. Zappel, I appreciate the question. We've increased the, you guys have increased the qualifications as the chart that Amy had shown, I think it's four inches of stormwater or rainwater that would come down that we're already designing to in the new twenty-five year. I think once the county has improved the requirements downstream and what we're doing on our community, I honestly think that there won't be any problems. In addition, I'd be more than happy to, it's two lots that are in this potential flood zone. It's not FEMA-approved yet.
I understand, yeah.
So it's just, it's just two lots, and I'd be more than happy to put a requirement now that we would inform those two homeowners. And I know it's, although the clock is stopped, so I don't know what that means, but just one or two more comments. I know it's difficult for rezonings, I get it, I really do. I've been in this business for a long time. It's difficult when folks understand on an eleven-acre piece of property that there's now going to be, what was eighty-six, now is sixty-seven houses behind them. I totally get it. I've met with the homeowners numerous times, and it's a difficult thing, but there's a balance. When we look at land and buying land, we look at location, and the first thing I do all of the time is look at the comprehensive plan to see what's potentially allowed in that particular area of the community, and we proceed forward. I feel that I've done about all I can do, and again, I'd be happy to make those one or two more qualifications to satisfy some additional required, or some additional issues. The tie-in, as Amy pointed out, we have learned from our title attorney that if we did tie in to those roads, we would be actually encroaching, and it wouldn't, it would be a title issue if we were to do that. As far as straight roads, they're all straight roads. Gordon Acres is a straight road, so is Daniel Boone Drive, they're both straight roads. So there's not a whole lot of flexibility, and it's the size of the piece of land. It's a difficult piece of land to develop, but it's also in a great location, and I'm trying to provide reasonably-priced homes for the general public. That was the intent. We started out at three-twenty-five per home, but we've gone up due to density. And one other final note, and I will be quiet, it is three-car parking, the option to park a fourth car if a client buys the additional garage, so I just wanted to clear that up. So there's plenty of off-street parking as a consideration. Oh, and HOA rules, absolutely, I will put in the HOA rules.
Time's up.
Maintain the fence. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now the opposition has five minutes of rebuttal. Many people can speak as they want to, but you've got five minutes altogether.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say that the, we have a regime here, and I really want to thank the county staff, the planning staff, they do a tremendous job, and they're very, very responsive, and our Alliance for Cape Fear Trees has an advocacy committee that's very active. We ask them lots of questions all the time, and we really appreciate their service. But we've got a regime in the county that, and the city, that looks at trees as if they were animals in a zoo. You know, like they have no connection to the land around them, to the other trees, to the understory, and it doesn't have to be that way. Lots and lots of municipalities and state involved across the country look at it in terms of the canopy coverage. You don't have to go in and pretend that you're counting each individual tree, is this a documented tree? Is this a significant tree? Is that a specimen tree? You do it with maps, you have a canopy, then, and you have rules that say, okay, well, for such and such a project in such and such a place, this is your goal, your canopy coverage goal. What we see, what we've seen in the county is that the canopy studies show that we've lost about three thousand acres of canopy between 2014 and 2022, and I'm sure it's gone up way beyond that in the last few years. Four percent of the total canopy coverage. So we know what that does. That increases the vulnerability to floods, it warms the air, it does not, the trees are not there to sequester carbon. What we run the risk of doing, going ahead as fast as we possibly can, is basically killing the goose that lays the golden egg. People come here because of the quality of life, and if we destroy that quality of life, they're not going to come here. And then there won't be a demand for all of these houses. I want to say also that the, there is research out there about the way we approach stormwater management. What we see over and over again, and there's nothing in the county's Unified Development Ordinance that prevents builders from building what we call green infrastructure or low-impact development, keeping trees and so on, working with the land to control stormwater runoff. We have to control it, but you don't have to do it with gray infrastructure. It doesn't have to be pipes, it doesn't have to be ponds that are often not maintained the way they should be, don't do the work that they're supposed to do. And in fact, there is research that suggests that they can become a health factor with algae and so on. So I would say that, you know, we need to look at slowing the process down a little bit perhaps. In this particular case, I think, you know, rezoning, if you do the rezoning, the project's going to go ahead. And I think it's a little premature right now. It's emblematic of what we see all across the county. Every project seems to be clear cut. They go in and it makes the most dense project, the most, I think, you know, profitable project, get more units there, you had easier to build roads and so on. And we see nothing but clear cut. It doesn't have to be that way. There are other ways to do it.
So there's a lady behind you that may want to get a word in.
Hi, quickly, regarding the fire hydrant, at the location we're talking about, the developer has proposed a pedestrian and bike path in that location. And so if a hydrant is placed there, it's not going to be additional trees. That's already going to be a tree divested area.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this time I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any board discussion?
Mr. Chair, could I, I'd like to ask Tim Lo, are you here, Tim, someplace? Tim, there was mention by one of the speakers about the existing ditches that are in the area. Are you aware of this and is our stormwater utility, is it on your radar to have those ditches cleared out?
Yes, sir. And as a matter of fact, within the last five years, we've actually been in there three times.
Three times.
Documented, yeah. Might be even a couple more. But ever since the utility's been created, we've actually been in there. We do have another one scheduled to come up, because I think someone pointed out that there's some more stuff in there needs maintained. So we actually have a work order right now that's in place. So they'll be getting to that soon.
So you're saying in the last timeframe of the last three years or so that you've cleaned out these ditches, so you, you know.
So there's various segments in there. So the first time we were in that area was with the EWP projects in 2020.
Sure, yeah.
Cleaning up after a lot of the Hurricane Florence debris was through there. We were in there in 2023 on a portion of it. I think it was in the vicinity of Gordon Acres back through Farrington Farms, through that segment, going up towards Putnam through there. We were working in that portion. And then in, there was another portion in 2022 that we were a little bit more extensive in that area.
I see. So in your opinion, the stormwater drainage system, as it were, through the ditches, should flow with greater capacity at this point?
I'd say better before we started maintaining it.
Yeah.
There's definitely, I think it was alluded to earlier in some other comments, that how the channel has deepened and some other things. So it obviously has some constraint going through there. And so the more vegetation and stuff that's allowed to grow in there over time can catch debris, create blockages. But that's why we're in there, trying to maintain it.
Great, thank you. And Amy, in your research of this, do you know when the lot was last forested? I noted in our packet that we are looking at trees that were thirty to forty years old. So that, you know, takes it back into the eighties or nineties. Was it forested at that point?
That did not come up in my research. That's not something that we looked at, and I didn't do the title on the property. I apologize, I don't have that information. Sorry. That's one a little bit deeper, but next time I have a rezoning, I'll check that.
Well, I think in this particular conversation, it's important because it appears by the age of the forested area, again, if the information is right, trees thirty to forty years, that at one point in the history of this lot, it may not have had the same kind of forested feel for it. Now, of course, a lot didn't, was different on Gordon Road at that time. But I was just trying to get a feel for that, but we don't have that data.
Mr. Johnson did say that most of it appears to be lob lolly pines.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Which are generally younger, I, yes. I picked up on the same thing, yeah. Thank you, that was all the questions that I had.
Anything?
Yes, sir.
Before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
We'd like to proceed with the vote, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make a general comment. This is a very difficult rezoning. I absolutely understand the tree issue and the flooding issue, which has certainly dominated this conversation. I appreciate that our twenty-five-year standards have been upgraded, something I know that I've been asking for, not just me, but other commissioners, for a number of years, and it's finally here, which is helpful. But at a ten-year, excuse me, a ten-inch event, which would cover us for a twenty-five-year event, we seem to see on more and more frequency. On the balance side of this, we need the housing. And the type housing that we're looking at here, as I made comment before, that a starter house at three seventy-five, I know started at three twenty-five. I know when the builder, Mr. Johnson, approached me months ago about this, he sounded a whole lot better. But that's where we're at with our cost and affordability of housing in New Hanover County. But I believe this is what the future of starter homes looks like in New Hanover County. The type building, and, you know, it will provide a housing type that we really, really need. The site is problematic, but I also understand, again, myself being a builder, the concept of how do you make this work cost-wise? At a certain point, you've got to have enough product to put out there to make it feasible, to make the project work. This is a very tough call on my part. But I will support this project the way it is. And I know that the builder will build a terrific quality product that will help put people in our county who need it. I'm talking about the workforce and young families and older families, for that matter, to be able to get in, into the housing world.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
I'd love to hear if there were other comments.
And you're right, this is a tough one. It's tough. I know this guy's going to do a good job if he does it, but if we, if we looked at every housing development based on trees and a hundred-year flood, our population would be about a hundred thousand people. Wouldn't be able to do anything. I mean, there's not a whole lot of places to build houses anymore. Everything's going that way, or that way, I'm sorry. But I think the builder will do a good job, and I'm in favor of it. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Just make one comment. I am actually concerned, I mean, looking at the map and the density, it's already there. I am concerned with the loss of the tree canopy. I'm concerned with the wildlife. I'm absolutely concerned with the flooding in that area. And I'm concerned with the traffic with the two roads and how that's going to work, especially since Gordon Road is about four or five years out of being finished. So those things do concern me, and I know that we don't have much land left here. But I know how much trees help with that. So I am concerned for all those reasons. Thank you.
You know, we just talked about affordable housing, and we talked about picking and choosing projects that we think are smart development. And I understand the tree canopy, and I'm a tree person myself, but this are single-family homes and a price point that can be beginner homes. And in New Hanover County, we talked about this during our budget season, five hundred eighty-one thousand dollars is the average home price. So, I mean, we don't have much opportunity to have something at three seventy-five. And I did some math on my phone, it's about two thousand dollars a month on a thirty-year mortgage. So, I mean, that's, I mean, that allows a person to be a homeowner and not live in a high-density apartment complex. So I'm in favor of single-family housing.
I just add to that, and I do appreciate that. We do need affordable housing. And I do, I'm kind of, I mean, I'm not surprised, but I am, the three seventy-five is the starter home price now here. But then I don't want people to flood either. So that's really where I'm sitting with this. I agree with that a hundred percent. We need more affordable housing. I just don't want those houses to be built and then them have to worry about them being flooded. That's what my concern is, the safety.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Well, it seems like everybody's going to talk about how they support this project, but aren't going to make a motion to actually move forward. So I'll make the motion to move forward.
We're waiting for you.
Apparently.
Go ahead.
I second.
I move to approve the proposed rezoning. I found it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because it fits into a largely residential area and is within the recommended density of the general residential place type. I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable in the public interest because the project is consistent with the character of the surrounding area, which varies in density but remains residential. I make reference to conditions one through eight. And that, Mr. Chair, is my motion.
Second.
Quick discussion, will you accept as a friendly amendment the comments or conditions concerning the fence and the notification of those two lots down near the...
If you want to make a new motion, you can do that. I made my motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a subsequent motion.
Absolutely.
Can we just add that to Dane's motion?
No, I mean, nobody wanted to make the motion and wanted to talk about how we approved the project, but didn't want to be on record as having made the motion, I guess. And so I made the motion, I'm going to stick with my motion.
I just seconded your motion.
All right.
Mr. Chair, then I'd like to make a substantive motion.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the proposed rezoning. I find it consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because it fits into a largely residential area and is within the recommended density of the general residential place type. I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the project is consistent with the character of the surrounding areas, which varies in density but remains residential. It includes the proposed conditions number one through eight and is inclusive of the conversation we had about the fence guarantees being put into the HOA conditions, as well as notification for the two lots that were discussed that are closest to the, where the storm, where the, you know, I don't know how to describe it. Near the front, close to Gordon Road, the two lots in question, oh, excuse me, I identified them. Number five and thirty-nine, seventy-nine, Amy, help me out here.
Yes, sir. We have those on our map, and they are lots fifty-nine and seven.
Yes, thank you. Fifty-nine and seven, that they will be notified. The new survey maps done by the county as addition to the FEMA maps. Kim, you got that?
Can you repeat that, please? If you can repeat after seven, when you said fifty-nine and seven, the notification of...
Notification of...
The flood advisory maps, is that what you want it to be? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to know if the applicant's okay with the new conditions that were presented by Commissioner Zappel before we vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll second it.
Can I chime in? I hate to do this, but I just want to make sure that we all agree on what the notification is. I don't know if Rebecca and Amy and I need to have a sidebar. I'm not trying to overcomplicate this, but is this in the first deed from the developer to the first buyer? Or is this in...
Mr. Zappel and Mr. Smith, if you would trust the three of us to get together and come up with some language that would satisfy you, if the condition could just be at the discretion of the county attorney and planning director, I think we would be able to work that out.
Yes.
I'm fine with that. And I think what Mr. Zappel was saying, he wants you to notify folks who might buy those lots, that it could be prone to additional flooding.
Yes, I just don't want to agree to anything in a deed without talking to his title attorney, but maybe it's in the contract for sale or something.
Yeah, I don't know about the deed. That just means a notice when someone looks at the property.
Yes, ma'am, we're happy to work that out.
And I just wanted, when we add the conditions on the fly, which we are permitted to do under the law, sometimes people have a different interpretation or understanding. But if you're comfortable delegating that to me and Rebecca and applicant's attorney, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, we even had to have a subsequent hearing over such an issue as that. And I sure hope that that's not going to be the case here.
I hope so, sir. I think we'll be able to come up with something. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Next is a request by Corey Faithfully with Equitas Law Partners, LLP, applicant on behalf of River Road Construction LLC, property unit modified existing approximately thirteen point nine-four acres, CZD RMF-L residential multi-family low-density and CZDB2, regional business district located at six thousand nine hundred and six thousand nine hundred and four Carolina Beach Road, to reduce the maximum unit count in density and to modify the approved housing type from multifamily to single-family attached dwelling units. First, we'll have staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. This application is a request to modify an existing rezoning of thirteen point nine-four acres from a conditionally-zoned residential multifamily low-density and a conditionally-zoned B2 with a reduction in density. The property is located near six thousand nine hundred Carolina Beach Road, where the site is bordered by R-15 zoning to the north, south, east, and west. The lot was rezoned in 2023 with the intention of constructing one hundred and twenty-six multifamily apartments and a thirty-six thousand square foot mini-storage facility. The applicant is proposing to rezone the CZD RMFL portion, replacing the one hundred and twenty-six multifamily units with eighty-five single-family attached homes, resulting in a decrease in density of forty-one units. From the aerial photography, we can see land clearing has begun and a retaining wall has been constructed along the north and west sides of the property. Here are photos of the property depicting the existing site conditions. Here is an example of a two-story storage unit facility. This is an example of single-family attached development. Here is the previously approved site plan from the 2023 rezoning, consisting of one hundred and twenty-six multifamily apartments and a thirty-six thousand square foot mini-storage facility. Here is the proposed site plan the applicant submitted, consisting of eighty-five single-family attached homes and a thirty-six thousand square foot mini-storage facility. Here is the location of Stormwater Pond. Here is the undeveloped open space extending further west out of the picture. Here is the location of the thirty-six thousand square foot miniStorage facility. Here is the public access easement along Carolina Beach Road that incorporates space for a future bike and pedestrian component. And here is the driveway access onto Southern Charm Drive. There are currently no state transportation improvement projects along this stretch of Carolina Beach Road. The property has right-in, right-out access onto Carolina Beach Road. There is also a driveway access onto Southern Charm Drive, which is a state road that is owned and maintained by the Department of Transportation. A condition of the original approval was for ungated access onto Southern Charm Drive, which staff continues to recommend. which staff continues to recommend. The amount of potential traffic generated is not enough to trigger traffic impact analysis. Moreover, the reduction in housing density should result in a decrease in traffic generated. This proposed rezoning aligns with the existing development pattern along Carolina Beach Road as the transition from R-15 to more commercial districts and higher-density residential zoning districts continues. It also affords residents another housing option, increasing the diversity of housing types in the area. This proposed rezoning aligns with two tenants of our strategic plan. Natural areas and critical environmental features are enhanced and protected. And through planned growth and development, residents have access to their basic needs. The comprehensive plan designates this property as general residential in the rear half, which focuses on lower-density housing and associated civic and commercial services and community mixed-use in the front half, which focuses on small-scale, compact, mixed-use development patterns that serve all modes of travel and act as an attractor for county residents and visitors. The concept plan appropriately locates the commercial use and the community-mixed-use place type in the attached homes within the general residential place type. The planning board considered this application at their June fifth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Following a brief discussion, the planning board recommended approval of the application, which included seven conditions. The planning board recommended modifying condition three to allow the developer to gate the Southern Charm driveway access if desired. After developer petitioned them to do so, while also hearing one public comment concerned with the traffic impact onto Southern Charm, Southern Exposure. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. The proposed modification of the rezoning provides additional housing types to the area at a lower density than current zoning, while retaining approximately six point four-one acres of naturally vegetated open space on the site. As such, staff concur with the planning board's recommendation. However, staff recommends keeping the original language of condition three, which prohibits a gate across the Southern Charm driveway access. The other conditions limit the location of RV and boat storage, secure access easements, and restrict the height of dwellings and the storage facility. They also establish a minimum buffer yard between existing residential structures and adjacent residential structures, and limiting the storage facility to a twelve-thousand-square-foot building footprint and a thirty-six-thousand-square-foot maximum. Staff have received one public comment in opposition. This concludes my presentation. Tim Lowe with County Engineering and Caitlin Serso with the WMPO are here to answer any further questions. The applicant is also here and has prepared a presentation.
Anybody got any questions? Thanks, sir. Now, here we go.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name's Corey Lee. I'm an attorney here in Wilmington, and I represent the applicant relating to this proposed modification of the two thousand twenty-three rezoning. Thank you for having us here this evening. I'll do my best to keep my presentation brief. This is a vicinity map, just so you can see where we're at with landmarks that might be familiar to you. As staff noted, the development just north is the Southern Charm Road, and Carolina Beach is to the east of that star. The current approval, again, as staff noted, is for one hundred and twenty-six apartments. And as we were going through our development procedures, we thought that, given the feedback that you've all heard this evening, and I think many of the commissioners, if not all of you, have brought up, is the need for affordable for-sale housing in New Hanover County. And that's what this proposal aims to accommodate. This is our proposed modification. The configuration of the site plan has been adjusted slightly to accommodate for the modification to amenities that are customary for townhouses, such as parking in front of the house rather than lots of parking that you would typically see with apartments. As staff noted at the planning board hearing in June, there was one individual who spoke in opposition. And the concern that he expressed as a resident of that subdivision that abuts to the north, that has Southern Charm Drive as their primary point of access, was the additional infrastructure, or rather, the additional burden on their infrastructure that they might see, given this development. And so, what my client recommended and what we are asking you to approve is a modification to condition three, as staff stated, that would authorize us, if approved by other relevant governing jurisdictions, as well as New Hanover County, to put a gate in, similar to what Ms. Schaefer noted, where emergency responders would have access, should that be necessary, or should there be another need for egress for the residents of this particular area, but that we could gate it so that it would not burden that Southern Charm Drive right away. This is a proposed rendering of what the townhouses would look like once constructed. And visuals can be helpful. And this is our letter regarding the proposed impact to traffic. As you can see, we net negative in total trips with a total of two hundred and eighty-five fewer trips as proposed to our currently-approved development. As staff noted, this is consistent with the two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan in that it puts the commercial development that's already approved towards the main thoroughfare and nests the residential development on the western portion of the parcel close to other adjacent residential uses, thereby providing a transitional buffer from the main thoroughfare to the residential areas that are closer or further from Carolina Beach Road. This is also reasonable and in the public interest. Again, to go to what we've all heard was a hot topic this evening, the accessibility and affordability of a for-sale housing product within New Hanover County. This would provide eighty-five townhouse units, perhaps a starter home for families in the area. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Anybody got anything?
Yes, hi, yeah. What is the, what is the price point that you say for affordable housing?
Let me confer with my client if we have a price point. There isn't a specified price point at this time, but we're thinking low threes to maybe, or sorry, high threes to low fours.
Okay. And I had a question about the open space. Is that going to remain open space?
The open space that was proposed.
At the very behind, at the very back of the property.
It will. There's several acres of open space, I believe.
Right. And I have one more question. The right-of-way you said is you want to gate it because there, the concern was it would be cut through road. You said, you said right-of-way. Is there a plan to maybe ungate that in the future, or?
In terms of the access point on Southern Charm Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
It would just be a gate to prevent citizen or residents of the townhouses from making use of Southern Charm Drive as a secondary point of access. It's not a guarantee that if that condition is removed, we will absolutely gate it. It just leaves it open as an option that we could gate it in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Question. Corey, back to that. Back to the Southern Charm gate. Will there be a gate there or not?
As it's currently proposed, there is a condition that staff has recommended and that was a part of the original rezoning application, that we could not gate either access point. However, given the feedback that was received at the planning board's meeting, we suggested that removing Southern Charm Drive's prohibition from having a gate could be appropriate. So that we could, but we wouldn't be forced to or forced not to. It would just be an option.
When the project is complete, let me run at this again. Will there be a gate on the access to Southern Charm Drive? It's a yes or no question.
I wish I could give you a yes or no answer, but we can't say yes or no without the approval of other governing jurisdictions. So, we would have to, Southern Charm Drive, I believe, it said was an NCDOT roadway. And so, for that reason, we would have to have conversations with NCDOT. We would have to go through TRC and staff approvals with the New Hanover County. So, I can't say absolutely unequivocally yes because there's a chance that DOT might not approve it, and I would never want to misrepresent that to you, Commissioner.
Ryan, could you comment on this? Why is the staff so keen on keeping this open?
I mean, part of it is that.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Sure. Okay. We have to wait.
You still, you finished your presentation?
Yes, sir. I'm finished. If you have questions for staff, I'm glad to say.
Mr. Chair, I just want to ask one clarifying question. So, you've previously been approved for one hundred and twenty-six multifamily units. And you're saying, instead of building these multifamily units, we want to make fewer eighty-five single-family attached units.
That's correct.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you. So, we have one person, Adrian Garber. Ms. Garber, you have fifteen minutes.
I won't be anywhere near that.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Adrian Garber, and I live in New Hanover County. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my concerns for the rezoning request, Z-two-three-zero-four-M for sixty-nine-hundred and sixty-nine-oh-four Carolina Beach Road. I oppose this request. These townhomes are not in keeping with the existing neighborhoods adjacent and nearby. This is too dense. I was not even aware that it was even denser before, but as it is approached now, it's still too dense. These townhomes are not in keeping with the little neighborhood next door that has the little single-family homes with a yard. Too many people. Please do not vote to allow this development to proceed. These townhomes may be fewer units, but they are big. They are three stories with thirty-six-thousand feet of commercial space in the front, self-storage, which apparently we need more of, which I find hard to believe. It's still too many considering the height and square footage of the units. This part of the county is primarily small detached, single-story, single-family homes with yards. This development should reflect that same type of building. Single-family attached units, or townhomes, create large areas of non-porous surfaces, increasing runoff to neighboring areas. The parking lot system and roads that they will build within the development will exacerbate that. They reduce the units to eighty-five, but there's a pool and a clubhouse that is not part of that eighty-five. What elevation changes are we expecting here? I know they've already clear-cut the lot, dug the retention pond, and built retaining walls. Retaining walls are pure evil in our type of land here. When you build a retaining wall, you are flipping the bird to everyone on the other side of that wall. You are saying, I am going to build mine higher. I'm going to be higher than you. When the storm comes, we'll be good, but y'all are going to be down there. And I see this happen in Monkey Junction with the townhomes that were built right there in Monkey Junction. And poor Marquee Hills behind there has little tributary ditches leading down to Mott's Creek. And now the houses behind them on the other side of that ditch are four feet higher than them. How do you think that's going to pan out when the next storm comes? When I talk to my friends and neighbors about the development here, I hear, it's bad where I am, or it's worse by me. It's so sad. I think of those words, bad, worse, sad. No one ever says, yay, they're building three-story townhomes behind me. I can't wait. And we get to share my road, too. No one wants this. I don't want this. I ask you to deny this request and all other requests for high-density zoning in New Hanover County. We need to stop building and clarify our goals as a county. We need a rate of growth ordinance, limiting the number of residential and non-residential permits issued each year. And we need a moratorium on all permits until that plane, plan is in place. The developer states that the back portion of the property is not going to be developed. Well, that may be true today. But if they're going to build eighty-five townhomes in the front, what's to stop them from asking to do that in the back down the road? We've already been approved for the front. Of course, you're going to approve them for the back. I wish that our population was a hundred thousand. I think we would all have a better quality of life and less risk of flooding. I envision the same things that happened on River Road, backfilling, clear-cutting. No one's talking about tree canopies anymore with this lot. It's too late. It's gone. And it's just going to keep going and keep going. I disagree with the housing shortage. I don't believe that just because everyone wants to live here that they should. Not everyone can live here. There are eight billion people on this planet. They cannot all live here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Y'all have five more minutes of rebuttal if you got anything else you want to talk about.
I'll keep it brief. In terms of the comments and opposition, again, one of our biggest points is that we're reducing density here by a third. So, in terms of making sure that infrastructure that's shared and flooding concerns are addressed, we think that that's what this project addresses. And to turn back Commissioner Zappel to your concern in our earlier part of the conversation, if there is a position that you prefer to say it absolutely will be gated or absolutely will not, do you have a position in terms of what you would prefer to see?
When it's the appropriate time, I'm really interested to hear. The staff mentioned several times in their report that they would like to see that left open. So, I'm interested in their point of view.
Yes, sir.
And to, so we can clear, clear this up before we vote on this.
Yes, sir.
And so, I'm sure we'll be back talking about this.
Absolutely. And just to clarify, in the event that that is a concern that the commissioners feel they cannot get over, despite the concerns from Southern Charm, Southern Charm Drive's citizens, we would be willing to agree with staff's recommendation to not have that be a gated access. So, whichever way the commissioners prefer, we're amenable to, to that proposal.
I'm sorry, I couldn't. Is it the right time?
Mr. Chair, I have a, I have one, one question as a follow-up. How much higher is it? I mean, I know a comment was made about how it's built up a lot higher. Is that?
Oh, that's actually a great point. I'm glad you brought that up. In fact, the retaining wall actually lowered our overall, our overall grade for our site. So, we are not higher. We are actually lower than we were initially.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I see. I've, I've been quieted again, so.
Yeah. Ms. Garber, you have five minutes of rebuttal if you'd like to come back up.
I'm assuming that the reduction in density is due to people wanting fewer, less density. It's too much, too many houses. It's too many people in this small space. We're carrying on like we're Manhattan. If I wanted to live in Manhattan, I'd be in Manhattan. We don't want to have three hundred and fifty thousand people. We don't want five hundred thousand people. Are we going to just start building higher next when all the land is gone? How does that work? Because there's, when you lose all the land, there's no more land. There's only one way to go, and that's up. And we're all going to keep changing our standards, changing the rules. Whatever the rules are, everyone's going to push it, push it, push it, push it. We have wording of entitlement for setbacks and intent for, we intend to do these things. We're going to plant these trees. We are not going to backfill. We're, we're going to say whatever we need to say. We're going to say whatever we need to say to get this the way we want you to. We want you to approve it. We're going to tell you whatever you want to hear." And I just feel like there's a lot of that, where down the road, like the other developments promising to build, to plant two trees in the front and the back, what happens if they don't? Anything? No. What happens if they do backfill these retaining walls, and they do make it higher after they've approved this? Nothing. There's no, there's nothing to be accounted for. And I would like to see more rules for setbacks and backfilling and non-porous surfaces. This all is going to create more runoff, and it's going to affect the neighboring people around them. They're not here. I think they probably feel helpless. They feel like, "Don't bother fighting this. It's a waste of time. Your words are falling on deaf ears." And I hope that's not true. I hope that you will deny this rezoning request and request that it be single-family, single-story homes with little yards, with little white picket fences. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, now we're going to close the public hearing. We'll have some more discussion, and we can ask questions.
Good. Cory? Oh, we have two questions. Ryan, go ahead, and we can finish that one conversation. Staff made it clear that they wanted to keep Southern Charm Drive open?
Correct, yeah. And we recognize the potential risk for traffic increases on Southern Charm Drive and southern exposure, but it was an original condition from the first rezoning, so that was important, staying consistent. And also, from the manager's office, interconnectivity is a big thing right now, and we're trying to promote it anywhere we can. So especially with the state-maintained road, it seems like a win then.
Cory, you have no objection to this?
We don't have an objection. We also recognize that there are considerations from the perspective of those who would be affected by it in the northern subdivision, so we're happy either way. We would be glad to have that condition removed, but would also be satisfied to have this approved with the condition in place.
Thank you. And Cory, thank you, Ryan, for that. Cory, a quick follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes retaining walls can be confused with sound barrier walls. Is the retaining wall retaining anything?
So it is, in fact, a retaining wall, but because we altered our grade from what it initially was, we lowered it. It is still retaining, but it's not impacting the adjacent properties in the way that was potentially suggested in terms of offloading water to those properties and supporting our additional grade. It's just assisting in the lowered grade that we have.
I see. How tall is this retaining wall?
I understand that it varies in height from around two feet to ten feet at the highest point.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Cory, there's another, you know, large issue that I... You note that in our packet here, we have a certain amount of school students that will, are proposed, will be a part of this new project. And we know that our schools, in this particular case, I think it's Ashley and Murray Middle School, are both at or over capacity. Who pays for those students?
In terms of tax dollars?
I guess, but who pays for this capacity?
I would...
Yeah? No, I'm just wondering, because we are cutting our schools. They don't have any money, and we've cut our budget. We no longer have any room for real growth. We have no more administrative reserve. We have no more contingency. And we don't have a tax rate that would support any money going to it. So I repeat the question, who pays for this additional load on what is clearly part of our infrastructure, which is the schools?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly don't want to disrupt, but I think that the board, if it continues too far down this path, is going to get into a space that it's not legally allowed to require compromise or commitments from the developer for school cost construction. Overcapacity is a reasonable basis to deny something, but it is absolutely not permissible for the county to talk about public facilities and the payment of said facilities by the developer. That is absolutely a county responsibility. So the board certainly is free to have this discussion, but I would suggest it's going into territory that you're otherwise not legislatively allowed to be.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Rob, maybe they don't have any children.
Maybe there's double the amount.
I know, but I don't think this is, she can't answer that question.
It's a larger discussion, I understand that, but with the constraints we've put on ourselves and our school board, this is a real issue.
Well, then, let them build one-hundred-and-twenty-six years instead of eighty-six. I mean, it's a reduction of property, of density.
I get that, but there still is, you know, more capacity being put on to our school system, which is clearly part of our infrastructure.
Commissioner Zappel, I'm not familiar intimately with the numbers in terms of how many additional students one townhouse unit versus one apartment unit would add to the school system. Certainly, townhouse units are going to add to your ad valorem tax base, perhaps at an increased rate for over apartments. I can't say that that's for certain, but that would certainly be my hope, that you would have additional taxpayers paying into the base. And so ultimately, any additional residential density is going to have additional students going into the schools. And to Vice Chairwoman Pierce's point, with a one-third reduction in density, I would hope that it would at least net zero in terms of additional students as opposed to our current approved proposal.
You can call up Eddie Anderson, he'll tell you.
Eddie doesn't work for them anymore.
He can still take you.
Yeah. Excellent answer, Cory.
I appreciate that, Commissioner.
Very nice. I don't fully agree with that, and this is, again, is a larger conversation that goes with development. We've left ourselves with very little room, if any room, to grow, and it's going to impact all of our infrastructure, our schools, our libraries, et cetera. I'll leave it alone for the moment. One more question, though. The six-point-four acres that are in the back, or the western part of the lot?
Yes, sir.
It's noted here in our plan that it will be reserved as open space?
That is correct.
Are there any plans to develop it in the future?
Not to my knowledge. My understanding as well of proposals like this is that once it's been committed as open space, it has to remain as open space. Certainly, I will defer to staff for their understanding to the extent that it is different than mine.
Well, it's a CZD, so conditional zoning, which locks it in. The plan we're looking at is there, and the verbiage that goes with it is it will be reserved as open space.
I completely agree with you. Wouldn't want to give a legal opinion, or I shouldn't, though.
Good, I'm sure. Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Anybody else?
No. No, we, Commissioner Zappel covered it. That was the question I had.
Okay.
All right, well, before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw the petition or proceed with the vote?
We would like to proceed with the vote, please.
Thank you.
I move to approve the proposed rezoning to a CZD RMF-L and CZDB-two. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because it is in an area designated as community mixed-use and general residential and provides for the types of uses recommended by these place types. I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable in the public interest because the proposed rezoning would provide additional housing types of, additional types of housing and greater land efficiency. I make reference to the proposed conditions one through seven. That is my motion.
But we still have to have them. Did we ever get a set on the gate? Is that going to be in it?
No, he's got the proposed conditions right here. Is that part of your motion?
Number three of the condition says the gate shall not, it shall not be gated. So that's what we're approving.
Just to clarify, that's the staff recommendation, and that's what...
My motion is the staff's recommendation, yes. I'm not deviating from the staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we leave that, ma'am, as you're leaving, you asked an important question. If they, somebody, the builder or the developer, does not follow the rules that have been laid out there, what happens? The answer to that question is they don't get a certificate of occupancy. So there are rules in place that our planning and zoning department and our inspections department agree with. I know that may not, you know, may comfort you in all levels of your concerns, but that's how the system works. Thank you.
Okay. Request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions, applicant on behalf of Denise Stone with Jay Stone Investments LLC, property owner, to rezone approximately four-point-three-one acres, zoned R-20 residential, located at thirty-four-nineteen Castle Hain Road, to CZDB-two regional business for a marine contractor office with warehousing. This is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff, then the applicant and any opponents. It will be allowed fifteen minutes each for their presentation and additional five minutes of rebuttal. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, the application is a request to rezone approximately four-point-three-one acres, zoned R-20 residential to conditional B-two regional business for marine contractor office with warehousing. The subject property is located on Castle Hain Road, just south of Chair Road. From the aerial photography, we can see the undeveloped site with St. James AME Church to the north, Tractor Supply to the east, and the residentially-zoned property to the west and south. This is the view of the site looking north of Castle Hain Road. This is the view looking south, and this is the view of the one-hundred-and-thirty-foot Duke Energy easement on the southern end of the property. This is an example of a local contractor office. Moving clockwise on the proposed site plan, we can see the office and workshop located at the center of the parcel. We have the parking lot to the east. South of the development is the Duke Energy easement. There are two warehouses for company use located west and north of the main office. There is a twenty-foot buffer in the eastern and northern property boundaries. The proposed stormwater is north, located between the development and the neighboring church. And finally, we have the proposed septic site located on the northeast corner of the property. CFPUA has confirmed that, has confirmed that Forest Main Sewer Service is available along the eastern side of Castle Hain Road. However, in order to make that connection, the applicant must pay to bore under the road. The site will have full access to Castle Hain Road. The main access to the site is located directly across from Tractor Supply. There have been several commercial projects nearby within the last few years. Most recently was the Moors Crossing Plan Development, just north of Chair Road, which was rezoned in 2024. The project is below the threshold that requires a traffic impact analysis. In addition, the approximate peak hour trips is expected to increase. The section of Castle Hain Road has seen an increase in commercial development in recent years. Roadway improvements of Chair Road, Castle Hain Road, and the I-140 entrance are expected as part of the Moors Crossing rezoning and associated TIA. The project would meet one of the county's strategic goals related to workforce and economic development. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as community mixed-use, which focuses on small-scale mixed-use development patterns that serve all modes of travel. On June 5th, the planning board voted to recommend approval of the proposal. The original application showed the district as conditional CS, whereas the concept plan and setbacks complied with the B-two district standards. The planning board may consider changes to applications during the meeting, and at the request of the applicant, the board voted to move forward with the application as a conditional B-two district, since all aspects of the project align with the B-two district standards. The planning board found the application to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the proposed mix of uses is in line with the recommendations with the community mixed-use place type. They also found recommending approval of the request was reasonable and in the public interest because the site is located near compatible land uses. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. As a result, staff concurs with the planning board's recommendation of approval. Four conditions are proposed, which are related to setbacks, fencing, easements, and permitted uses. Should the rezoning be approved, the project will be subject to additional development review through the technical review committee. This concludes my presentation. The WMPO and county engineering are here to answer any questions. The applicant is also here for additional questions.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf?
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I'm here on behalf of the owners and potential developers of this property. As she pointed out, it's a vacant tract just south of the I-140 interchange. You can certainly see that there have been various rezonings that have occurred in the vicinity, and my clients have been searching for a site to relocate their contracting business. This parcel certainly meets all the criteria for size and location with that accessibility to I-140. The site layout is simple. Development area is somewhat limited due to that large power line easement bordering the southern part of the property. The larger building is intended for very minor amount of contractor offices and then a large internal workshop. The front will be paved with minimal parking for any visitors, which there would not be many of. The architectural design plans an attractive facade with more decorative building materials there facing Castle Hain Road, and then everything else behind is more industrial, if you will, in nature as far as the architecture. Once past the security gates to both sides, the pavement will transition to gravel to access the service yard sized for efficient multiple overhead doors, maneuvering space for trucks with trailers. Now, these aren't tractor trailers, but they are like duallys and pickup trucks that do have boat trailers behind them. The access is positioned in alignment with Tractor Supply driveway for better safety in the center lane turning movements. And the tract is basically flat as a pancake. So basically, what happens here is that floating docks are built to order in the shop for delivery to specific job sites. They don't do their work here. They just build pieces and parts and pieces of it and take them to the job sites. So it's no different than pre-construction of cabinets by building contractors that then they take to homes, excuse me. There is no heavy machinery, other than a small forklift. Otherwise, you can expect basic handheld power tools that would be found in any workshop, residential or commercial. Nowadays, most of them are generally cordless, so they have much less noise as it is as far as tools. So we don't believe noise will be an issue. No hydraulic lifts or pneumatic equipment. There's a total of eleven to twelve employees. Most of them are out on job sites during the day. Hours of operation, basically, Monday through Friday, seven to seven, although we would expect on occasion there would be work there on Saturday in the mornings, I would guess. This exhibit gives you a little bit better idea with the aerial photography and how Tractor Supply is laid out. I'm anxious to get the same aerials that the staff's now using because the GIS on the county isn't updated for 2024 photography yet, but hopefully they will make that available to the public. With that, we appreciate the staff's recommendation, certainly the planning board's consideration of it as far as consistency and overall approval. We do believe it is reasonable and in the public interest. I am here to answer questions, and Daniel Shirley, one of the partners of NC Marine, is here if there's anything that I cannot answer. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Zappel has questions.
Great. Cindy, talk to me about the septic situation.
Of course.
Yeah. It seems odd that we have that Forest Main right across the street there.
But right across the street is several hundred-thousand-dollar road bore. You can see here the UCFPUA plans. If my clients have a reasonable choice, they would hopefully be able to run up the western side of Castle Hain Road over the church property, but right now, that is a private property. It would require an easement. That being said, I believe... That being said, I believe there is someone from, generally, the church. And we have been very cooperatively talking about the ditches in the back, working together with those. So, I'm not discounting the possibility of going up the western side of Castle Hain Road to that Forest Main, but there is a lot involved. A project like this with 11 to 12 employees will pretty much have one unisex bathroom, and it would be prohibitive to mandate connection across the road when a septic system has been located and is available to us. But, I mean, I totally agree with you, and they would love to hook up. That's something we will continue to pursue.
We were told in our packet, type 3 soils, not conducive to septic.
We have located a septic field.
You have?
Yes.
I see. And future use, of course, of the buildings, it may expand beyond 11 to 12 employees. You mentioned there's, there's someone here that can later talk to us from the church about the possibility of getting an easement?
I don't know that he's prepared to talk about that.
Oh, I see, okay.
I'm just saying that we've been cooperative with the church, and we'll continue, we're trying to work with them.
Cindy, we also know there's been some flooding issues to the church as a result of the, the Moors Crossing over there. And is any of this related-
That's to the north.
Yes, right.
I think the flooding problems they've talked about is in the back, and that is where we have discussed joint efforts during construction when we have major equipment out there to move earth and those types of things. The ability for us to work together in clearing some of those ditches for the downstream flow. That being said, there's an inner, then somewhere else here, there are other property owners. But again, I think those are things that we can work out, not only with the church, but certainly with the County Engineering Department.
And that will not impact your stormwater pond?
No. Our stormwater pond would be designed to all of the current criteria and regulations, both of the state and the county, and the overflow is in the natural spot where, the lowest spot of the site now. So, the key there is to make sure that the downstream flow is clear.
So, where is your overflow going to go?
Right there, where the blue line is.
Where the blue line is, I see.
Generally speaking.
Yeah, yeah, I get you, yeah.
Um, as far as, what did you say, the septic system situation, if this type of use were to, in the future, be a different contractor's office with more toilets or whatever, that would be a Health Department thing, and then that perhaps could mandate the connection to the Forest Main. We just want the opportunity to be versatile based upon the limited use and the high cost.
I understand. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. We have one speaker in favor, Bernard Williams.
Hi, my name is Bernard Williams. Address 2301 Rock Hill Road. I'm a member of St. James AME Church. I'm, I'm here not against the proposal of what they want to do. I'm hoping that we can work together as good neighbors to even the, her septic problem. The church has been given a proposal from the county about putting in a sewer system or Forest Main for the church. So, hopefully, I've talked to the chief engineer. We need to get together with, with the owners of the property, and we hopefully, that we can work something out, that we can work something together with the system, so that we can help each other, because we're on a separate tank ourselves. So, if we can put the, the system, big enough system in to take care of both properties, then that's what I'm hoping that we can work out. Because the drainage there is terrible.
Yeah.
Even with, even with the pond, there, there's going to be overflow, and then where the water going. We, we, we've been, I've been at the county about draining Rock Hill Community for years. Right now, as, as we speak, I'm already took it on myself to clean out ditches that I was hoping I could get the county to do, but I have to do what I have to do. But hopefully, we, we can be good neighbors, and we can work all this out and help run another.
Thank you, sir. Okay, there's no opposition, so I'm going, let's, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does anybody have a discussion they want to ask anybody, staff?
Seems like a good project, Mr. Chair.
It does, me too.
No questions.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Hang on.
Uh, hold on.
She knows her.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Would you like to withdraw the petition or are we going to vote right now?
I'd like to move forward, please.
I'm sorry, Cindy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to approve the proposed rezoning to a CZDB2 District. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the Comprehensive Plan because the rezoning provides the types of uses recommended in the community mixed-use place type. I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because it is located near compatible, compatible land uses. I would include the proposed conditions, numbers 1, 2, 3, and 4, and I think that's it. You all right, Kim? Right?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. This is a request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions, applicant on behalf of Jose Godinez, property owner, to rezone approximately 2 acres and R20 residential located at 4222 Castle Hain Road to CZDB2 Regional Business for the uses of Contractor Office and Offices for Private Business and Professional Activities. This is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff, then the applicant and any opponent, will each be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and an additional five minutes of rebuttal.
Thank you again, Chair, members of the board. Application is a request to rezone approximately 2 acres, zoned R20 residential to conditional B2 Regional Business for the uses of Contractor Office and Offices for Private Business and Professional Activities. The subject property is located along Castle Hain Road, just north of the Castle Hain Road, I-140 interchange. It is surrounded by commercial parcels, two of which were rezoned within the last few years. From the aerial photography, we can see the subject site with the existing single-family home, the contractor trucks in the front and back of the property. In March 2025, the Planning Department was made aware of a violation at the subject site for a business operating in a residential district. Shortly after, a zoning technician stopped by the property to discuss the violation with the owner. To correct the violation, the owner is applying to rezone the property from residential to commercial and hopes to continue operations of the business from the current location. Here are several views of the property. In all of these photos, you can see cars parked in front of the house. If the project is approved, the parking lot will be placed behind the house, and the cars will be out of view from the street. Here's an example of a local landscaping company. This property is actually located directly next to the subject site. This is an example of adaptive reuse of a single-family home, which is commonly seen along Castle Hain Road. This shows the proposed concept plan, moving northwest to southeast. We can see the proposed site, we can, excuse me, the proposed sign next to Castle Hain Road. And we have the 2,000-square-foot office. Located behind the office is the parking lot. Then we have the storage and equipment yard with a 600-square-foot shed to the west. We have a fence surrounding the yard on three sides. There is a 35-foot setback and buffer between the subject site and the neighboring residentially-zoned property. The concept plan shows the stormwater pond at the rear of the property, though it could also be placed at the front of the property pending full engineering review. The site will have full access to Castle Hain Road. There have been several commercial projects nearby within the last few years, including the last hearing, which is just about one mile from this property. In addition, the property next door was recently rezoned to a driving range. The project is below the threshold that requires a traffic impact analysis. In addition, the approximate peak hour trips is expected to increase slightly. The B2 district is commonly seen along the Castle Hain corridor. The neighboring two properties which border the site were both rezoned in 2024. In addition, there are several properties along Castle Hain Road that have undergone adaptive reuse of a residential home. The project would meet one of the county's strategic goals related to workforce and economic development. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as community mixed-use, which focuses on small-scale mixed-use development patterns that serve all modes of travel. In addition, there is a small portion of the site that is in the employment center. On June 5th, the Planning Board voted to recommend approval of the rezoning request. They found the application to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the Comprehensive Plan because the rezoning provides for the types of uses recommended in the, in the community mixed-use place type. The Planning Board also found recommending approval of the rezoning request was reasonable and in the public interest because the application is limited to the uses that are those that are appropriate for the site. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. As a result, staff concurs with the Planning Board's recommendation of approval. Five new conditions are being proposed, which are related to adaptive reuse of the single-family home, limiting the allowed uses, parking facilities, tree retention, and the location of the stormwater pond. Should the rezoning be approved, the project will be subject to additional development review through the Technical Review Committee. This concludes my presentation. The WMPO and County Engineering are here to answer any questions. The applicant is also here for additional questions.
Anybody have anything?
No, sir.
Not at this time, no.
Thank you, ma'am. Cindy?
Thank you again. For the record, my name is Cindy Wolf, and I'm here on behalf of Jose Godinez. And he and his brother are partners in a landscape business called Brothers Landscaping. They already own the property. They were mistaken in starting their enterprise a little ahead of the game, and because they were right beside another landscape contractor, right down the street from a few more, it was just a misunderstanding. We are trying to remedy that, and I think we have a, a good solution to it. There is other zones very similar around it. Of course, we have the driving range to the south of us and this other landscape company. This is the house. Part of the plan for the future is to cease parking in front of it, and I think that's something that'll be a benefit. But there is still room for the pond when we work with County Engineering. The plan she showed you, I don't need to elaborate on. We do feel this rezoning is consistent, reasonable, and in the public interest. Certainly, the adaptive reuse is a, is a high point of it. The proposal does provide an orderly and acceptable transition along busy Castle Hain Road, and the place type fosters this type of sustainable growth through sensible infill and efficiency. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Yeah, Cindy, yeah. Cindy, the storage area, material, do we know what types are we have? Do we have heavy equipment in there, or no?
No, none at all. They don't really store material like, I mean, there may be some pine stroll and some small mulch things, but they have those delivered to the sites. So, this is not an issue that we talked about up the road a bit, where they were using heavier equipment. That's more for the trucks to be behind the fence at night, the trailers.
There's, I know planned boat storage, et cetera, is not a part of this?
No, this is a landscape contracting business, their office and their storage area.
Got it. Great. And are they on septic as well?
Yes, they are.
Existing septic?
Yes.
Thank you.
The house has been renovated inside. I believe that through the TRC process, the Health Department will reaffirm their permitting, so that would have to be updated if necessary, but there is no sewer in this area.
Yeah.
Public.
Yet.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hopefully. Thank you.
Catherine, have you got anything else from staff that you'd like to say?
Nothing further for me.
Okay. Well, I'm going to close the public hearing. Has anybody got a discussion with either party?
No, sir.
Well, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve. Oh, excuse me. There we go, yeah. Racing for the barn, that's all, yeah.
I'd like to move forward with your decision, please.
Thank you. I move to approve the proposed rezoning to a conditional B2 District. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the Comprehensive Plan because the rezoning provides for the types of uses recommended in both the community mixed-use and employment center place types. I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because application limits uses to those which are appropriate for the site. I include that, conditions 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
I like second.
Good.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 17, do we handle that in the, first?
No, sir. You need to take a vote on that, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to designate Commissioner Sappel as the voting delegate for the upcoming convention.
All in favor? All in favor say aye.
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 Sir, who seconded that motion?
I did.
Thank you.
Okay, committee appointments. Air League Gardens Foundation Board Director.
Josh Rochenberg.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, I'm going to nominate the three vacancies Nancy Bullock, Charles Pennington, and Carrie Williams.
Second.
I nominate Harold Jarvis and Laura King in addition to Nancy Bullock.
How you want to handle that, Mr. Chair?
We got to handle the first one first, I guess.
I think there was agreement on Nancy-
Well, I think you made a substitute motion.
Yeah.
No, we, we've typically gone with whoever got out the gate first. On these, it sounds like we have agreement on Nancy Bullock.
Right.
And then I suppose we can vote on Commissioner Sappel's other picks, and then if it does not gain three votes, move to the nominees that I have put forth.
So, we should do Nancy first? Should we go ahead and just vote on Nancy first?
Uh, Nancy Bullock, Charles Pennington, and Carrie Williams.
Okay, and you, you made a motion.
I seconded it, yes, sir.
Okay. I don't believe we got a third.
What are we doing?
Well, I, I, okay. I think we had agreement on Nancy Bullock. We got three votes for that.
Oh, Nancy Bullock, yeah.
Yes, we did.
Aye.
So, then we may, an idea would be to vote on Charles Pennington. Correct?
Yes, sir. And I don't believe we got three votes. Just got two.
I see.
Should we go ahead and vote, though?
I don't think we-
Yeah, yeah. All in favor of Charles Pennington?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Aye. So, we go back to your motion now?
I think you had one more, Carrie Williams.
Carrie Williams.
Okay. And we got a first, I mean, a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Aye. How about you? No, okay.
Harold Jarvis and Laura King, Mr. Chair.
Uh, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Did you get that, Kim? Okay, New Hanover County ABC Board.
George Hoffman.
I think we need, uh, we, we've approved Nancy Bullock, and we approved Harold Jarvis.
We not vote on the third?
And then we, there's one more.
You think we missed the third?
No, I, I made a motion for two individuals.
Yeah.
In addition to Nancy Bullock.
Right, and I, I thought we just voted on Harold Jarvis.
Yeah, there was only one name.
Harold Jarvis and Nancy Bullock and-
Laura King.
Laura King.
Laura King. So, we're going to vote on Laura King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, my, my motion was for Harold Jarvis and Laura King. There was a second from the chair. He called the vote. Those two individuals move forward without any further vote being needed.
Right. All right, here, goodbye, yeah, fine, good.
Okay, so we're still ABC Board.
And I said George Hoffman, Mr. Chair.
And I second. Ms. Pierce, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? New Hanover County Airport Authority.
Andrew Jones.
I'd like to nominate Andrew Jones.
Second.
Sure?
I just seconded.
Sorry, I was just speaking over my companion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? New Hanover County Board of Medical Examiners.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Stephen Everhart, he's the only one on here.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New Hanover County Cooperative Extension Advisory Council.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Deborah Judge Watt to the role expiring on 12/31/26, and Joy Williamson expiring on 12/31/27.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? New Hanover County Health and Human Services Board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Dr. Emily Baxter.
What's her last name?
I'm sorry?
Baxter?
Yeah, reappoint Dr. Emily Baxter.
Okay.
Rachel Kraus, Dr. Maurice Locklear, Ms. Mayo, and Dr. Karen Smith.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? New Hanover County Inspection Department Advisory Council.
Mr. Chair, I move all three by acclamation.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr.?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I believe you're at the non-county agency funding committee, and this is the night of requesting that the board stand down certain actions. And so I have a recommendation that the board eliminate the non-county agency committee as well as the non-county agency policy in light of withdrawing from the non-county agency funding and clearly articulating for the benefit of the endowment that they are not supplanting county dollars.
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. That's the end.
Nope, we got one more.
Miss one.
Land Department.
One more, Mr. Chair.
I miss.
Planning.
Oh, I see. That's all hidden back here. New Hanover County Planning Department.
Reappoint Clark Hip, nominate Andy Hewitt.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Stephanie Lee Corrigan.
Okay, now we go to the speaker sign-up sheet, and the first person is James Jim Nebbit.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Board. And I really want to start by just saying I appreciate your patience and your dedication.
And you got three minutes, I forgot to tell you.
Okay, I lost ten already.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Jim Nesbit, a retired teacher and principal who has worked with students, teachers, and parents from Alaska to Wilmington. As a teacher, I taught what is called the three Rs, not just reading, writing, and arithmetic, but respect, responsibility, and reputation. Respect for self and others, responsibility for everything you do and say, and reputation, how others will judge you based on your actions. Today, I ask you to consider those three Rs as you reflect on your budget decisions and the real consequences of the tax rate you adopted. The difference between a proposed tax rate of thirty-three point nine cents and the adopted thirty point six cents may sound small. For the average homer, it's just a hundred and thirty-five dollars a year, about eleven dollars a month. But in our schools, that saving comes at a high price. We are seeing overcrowded classrooms, fewer counselors, social workers, and critical positions from bus drivers and teaching assistants left unfilled. Arts, music enrichment programs are disappearing, and school leaders are forced to choose between essentials and non-extras. We are trimming around the edges. We are hollowing out the core of public education. And it didn't have to be this way. This decision came right after a sixty-seven percent increase in property values, a rare opportunity to reinvest in our schools and student services. Instead, we pulled back, and our children are paying the price, not because our community lacks resources, but because we've chosen not to use them wisely. We are fortunate that the commissioners and your wisdom created the community endowment to help meet some of our educational and social needs. But those solutions are still on the horizon. In the meantime, the cuts are real, and they're hurting families now. I want to close with a story. Recently, I ran into a former student who described, who I described as hell on roller skates. Honestly, I wasn't sure he'd make it. But when we talked, I asked if he remembered me. He said not only did he remember me, but he teaches his children and grandchildren what I taught him. I took a deep breath because I didn't know what I was gonna say. Have respect for yourself and others, be responsible for everything you do and say. Commissioners, you now have the same opportunity. You can show respect for our children, families, and educators. You can take responsibility for your choices, and your reputation as leaders will be shaped by whether you rise to meet this moment. Please revisit the tax rate, reinvest in our schools, and reaffirm your commitment to serving the public good.
Thank you, Mr. Nebbit.
Thank you.
I know I'm gonna butcher this. Beech and Celine?
I'm here to let you guys know that I urge the commissioners that to accommodate with people with disabilities who have seizure disorder to provide affordable transportation in zones where the public transportation routes do not run through. And it would be great if that would be a possibility because apparently the agency that I'm with, A Caring Heart, only provides so much towards their clients, and they're undependable as well. And I, they, I can't just depend on them for all my transportation issues. And so because of that, I need some, an alternative to fill in the gaps since apparently Wave Transit doesn't, can't provide the services that I need in regards to taking me to places for recreational and for essential needs because they took my independence away on January 5th. And ever since, I'm in solitude, and it sucks relying on others to have to go to places instead of just having to go out on your own. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. How would you feel if you got your car keys taken away from you and you couldn't get, go anywhere you wanted to? And you were having to beg people for rides, and this and that, and this and that? And it would just be, it would be great if I had independence like I once had before January 5th. And yeah, that would be wonderful if that would be a possibility, you guys, so, yeah. I'm hoping that you'll take consideration into my comment. Thank you.
Wait, wait a minute, is there a bus? You live down near Masonboro, right?
Yes, I live in Masonboro, he knows that.
Yeah, whereabouts? I don't want to know exactly where your house is, but what street?
Oh, it's way off of like Carolina Beach Road, South College, and Oleander, and Pine Grove, you know, somewhere in that part of town.
I was just wondering how far you are away from?
And this notion that, it's just amazing how people are addicted to cars like cocaine nowadays. I mean, it's just, it's how it is.
How far away? If I knew where you lived, you know, the neighborhood, it would help. But I'm just wondering how far away from a, from a bus line do you live?
From the 206 bus line on Oleander, which takes God knows how much energy out of me to walk all the way over there.
Isn't there one coming down?
In this hot weather, it's not a possibility.
Mr. Chair, I'll just offer that Wave Transit and the WMPO regularly interface with Bijon as does our county manager who serves on the WMPO board. One of the complicating factors that Bijon is referring to is he was previously utilizing the micro-ride transit service that would pick people up directly. But because he was one of, if maybe not the only person that was utilizing the service in the area, it was deemed to not be something that we could continue from a cost perspective.
Such a unicorn.
Am I speaking incorrectly, Mr. Manager?
No, sir, that is accurate.
I would just offer that I am, and I am certain that all of us up here are highly sympathetic to Bijon's situation. And, Mr. Manager, I would just ask for you and the folks over at Wave to continue to do what you have been doing, which is to work with him to find solutions as we're able.
Yes, sir, and we are to the point. We have a discussion of this most months, and I'll use a phrase I heard earlier this morning. It is, it's an imperfect solution, but there is support for the rider. It is not on demand, it's not seven days a week, and we continue to explore how to make non-medical transport available to him through a number of departments. But there is service, but it is not the ideal service.
Is there, is there a line that comes down Mason?
No, no, sir. The routes have been completely collapsed and focused on efficiency, and that transition took place in January of last year. This is unfortunately quoting, it is a unicorn situation where there was one rider that was left impacted by the contraction of Ride Micro. But again, there is ridership five days a week. It's not exactly on demand. It does create some limitations, so it's an impractic, it's not impractical. It's a less than ideal solution. We continue to work on it for this individual.
So, Mr. Manager, just a question. I thought about this in the past, and I don't know if there's any programs like this, but are there any type of Uber vouchers that are provided through the county for situations like this?
No, ma'am. We invest in Wave Transit. That's this board's policy focus. If that's something that the board wants to explore to be different, certainly we're ready to take that direction. But no, ma'am, we do not provide Uber vouchers or Lyft vouchers.
I've heard of that in other communities, and that's why I was wondering if that was something that.
If that's something the board wishes to explore, we certainly can take. It would require revenue from the county to go to Wave to do that. That is not within Wave's operating budget.
Chris, what's our contribution this year to Wave?
One point six million, I believe. Plus, there are purchased services from departments, from Wave that are in addition to the one point, and I believe I have that committed memory, one point six million in operating assistance.
And we can't find room for a voucher?
That is a decision for the Wave Board, of which I'm a member.
Yeah.
Certainly, if you would like to bring that forward to Wave, Commissioner Scalise is here, I'm sure that can be surfaced. But I would advise that when we begin to step aside and make one-off policy, we begin to open a gate that is otherwise unmanageable. There is ridership provided five days a week. It is not ideal, but no system that is a publicly managed system is fully on demand at the time that the rider needs and wants.
Are there any organizations other than Wave Transit that nonprofits or community organizations that could help this gentleman?
Yes, ma'am, that is who is helping him currently. Again, it is not an ideal situation, but no, no. Eric, what was the name of? Caring Heart case manager.
Come tell them, oh, you guys, can you provide me with weekend service? You really think they're gonna say yes?
Commissioners, I'm just reflecting to you the position we're in. If this board wants to make a motion to, out of your funds, to solve the problem, we're prepared to take that forward. But this is not a solution that at this point Wave is prepared to address singularly for one rider when there are transportation supports available as well as support through the Department of Social Services that is still trying to unpack where the disconnect on that is. But this rider is not left unserved.
And just as a reminder, the Wave Board went through an exhaustive analysis to reconfigure its routes to become more effective, more efficient. And the county's investment in Wave over the last two years, Chris? We've increased.
Yes, sir.
Rather considerably over the last couple of years.
We've gone from, I believe it was seven hundred thousand to one point six million.
Chris, has anybody reached out to Trillium?
I don't know the answer. It wouldn't be us who did that. I mean, we're, Trillium is, can certainly connect him with his service provider. But again, you're asking right now for us to manage one problem out of a hundred thousand rides in the course of a year. I just can't do that here and now. I'm telling you, there is ridership available. If it's not what is pleasing to the board, and the board chooses in this moment to fix it, direct that, and we will, at Thursday's Wave meeting, be glad to address it.
I don't think you totally understood, and maybe I presented it wrong. I know Trillium offers some services like this, and mobility issues.
They do through provider networks, of which one of their providers could in fact be the one I just referenced. Trillium is not a direct service provider.
I know they have, but they have other providers.
And this may well be one of them. I don't know. I do not know the complete inventory of.
We're not gonna get this handled tonight, but we will look into it. Okay?
Do we have Mr. Bijon's?
Thank you.
We do.
Okay, Tom Gill?
Good evening. I have what I, you know, want to talk about. I was gonna take more than three minutes. I had sent you guys an email this morning asking for an opportunity to meet with you individually. I feel like the decision that was made tonight in regards to the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, you guys had posed some questions and made some comments that I think may not have been a hundred percent accurate. So I'm hoping that you guys would be willing to continue to sit down and meet with me and maybe reconsider your decision. I believe the policy set forth between the city and county allows sixty days before it's, you know, would be dissolved. I would hope that you guys would at least try and hear out what I have to say. One of the things that I feel like you guys haven't talked about, so maybe you're unaware of, was last year we did a developer roundtable that was very well received by all parties. I think that everybody came away rejuvenated and learned something from it. This year, we had a summit where we had the builder community and business community attending. That was well-attended, again, we got good feedback from that. So those are things that do not involve the three million dollar grant that I feel like we have done, you know, both of those things at one time. I feel like we can continue to grow those things. And as was mentioned earlier tonight, things like reaching out to our surrounding counties, just like, you know, the city and county have, I think, different pieces of the puzzle that they can each bring to try and help tackle this issue. I feel like those surrounding counties can also help. And so anyway, I just wanted to at least invite you guys to, you know, meet with me and at least kind of try and learn a little bit more before you guys make what I think is a misstep in what we can do to serve our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. You got anything, sir? Okay. Anybody got anything else? It's me, Mr. Jerome.